Hi, everyone. Welcome to the September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one Long Meadow Select Board Meeting. This is Select Board Chair Mark Strange. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda for tonight are present.
Everyone, welcome to the September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Select Board Members Steve Marantz.
Here.
Josh Levine.
Josh is muted.
Mark Gold.
Here.
I'm here. This is a tough one for me, sorry.
Tom LaCusa.
Here.
And then, members of the Planning Board, Walter Gunn.
Present.
Don Hollands.
Here.
Who else we got?
Bruce Colton.
Bruce Colton.
Bruce Colton. Is that it?
That's it.
Very good. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Corinne Mycimans.
She's not joining this part of the meeting.
Okay. And Mike Barbieri is on stone vacation. This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely. It's timed with chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one. This meeting is convened by Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda in Town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless we know otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature a resident comment. Resident comment using the Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. A member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hands, star two six to mute and unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual afforded will be afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. First item on tonight's agenda are select board announcements. Water, sewer, and stormwater billing. The biannual water, sewer, and stormwater bill was mailed out this weekend. Covers the billing period from February to July. This will be the last biannual bill as we switch to quarterly billing. An insert explaining this change is included in the upcoming bill. The bill will be due in December. The bill that will be due in December will only contain two months of usage. That was we transitioned to the new quarterly system. Schedule moving forward is linked in the newsflash on the Town website and will be included in the next bills being mailed out. An update on the status of the construction of the Long Meadow Adult Center. An update on the status of construction is being distributed via the Council of Aging, Council on Aging Newsletter, entitled The Voice, is also being provided on the newsflash on the Town website. We're all anxiously awaiting the completion of the new center. And once we know the opening date, it'll be advanced far by for all to attend the grand opening celebration. In the meantime, the Adult Center continues to offer meals on field services, food pantry, and remote shine appointments. The Center will be scheduling some small programs at the old Adult Center located in the Greenwood Center at two thirty-one Maple Road. Those programs will be limited to smaller groups and participants are required to wear masks and maintain social distancing of three feet minimum at all times within the Adult Center, as is the current requirement in buildings within Long Meadow. Please see the homepage of the website for a complete update on the status of construction of the new center. And finally, the Long Meadow Cultural Council is looking for new grant applications. The two thousand twenty-two application cycle opened up on September first, two thousand twenty-one, and runs through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Online applications are accepted for cultural projects and programs related to the arts, sciences, and humanities to include grants for operating support, tickets, subsidies, field trips, artist residencies, public art, fellowships, community events, site-specific projects, and other activities based on local priorities. The Long Meadow Cultural Council gives highest priority to programs which occur in the town of Long Meadow and are submitted by Long Meadow residents or organizations and with dates and venues already secured. Due to the unpredictability of the COVID-nineteen situation, Council will consider the difficulty in securing a venue. If your project or performance has the potential to be offered virtually, please let us know in your application. We are encouraging applicants to think of new ways to enrich the cultural lives of our community. Long Meadow Cultural Council is part of a network of three hundred and twenty-nine local cultural councils serving all three hundred and fifty-one Massachusetts cities and towns. Each year, the state legislature allocates funding to the Mass Cultural Council, which now portions funds for the benefit of all Massachusetts residents. For online grant applications, please go to wwwMass-culture, that's M-A-S-S dash culture dot org. Or for questions, please email Peg Landon, who is the chair, at peglandon@comcast.net. Next on the agenda is our Planning Board vacancy interview.
Yeah, the meeting is on. If you turn on the TV, you probably watch the meeting.
Bruce. Is Carl Petrick online?
I'm moving Carl in now.
Oh, hey, Carl. How you doing?
I'm good. I apologize for being a little bit late. I'm actually in Washington DC, so it's the hotel room behind me. So I had a meeting that finished about six thirty-five, gave me just enough time to get back here, and here I am.
Well, thanks for stepping forward, but you're throwing your hat in the ring. Can you tell us a little bit about, you know, what motivated you to apply for the planning board?
Sure. I've lived in Long Meadow for just around a decade, been looking for ways to get involved with, you know, town governance. And as occasionally things would come up, it always seemed to be, oh, the finance, oh, I've got a night class and things like that. So I never was able to put my name forward. And this time around came up perfectly that the opening came up. I'm available when the meeting happens, as well as kind of fill a question out to you guys. Sort of what piqued my interest a little bit in this. I think pre-COVID, there was an issue regarding some chicken coops in part of Long Meadow and the possibility of those being built. I know about it because I knew somebody that lived down that way. This is the kind of thing I imagined that the Planning Board would be involved with at all or no. I mean, that's not my reason, but it was like kind of my insight into things that happened in Long Meadow that I wasn't aware of.
Mark?
Yeah, go for it.
Here. Yeah, no, that's a, actually, it's in our, it's in the zoning bylaws. It's actually regulated by the Zoning Board of Appeals. They actually didn't get a special permit to have chickens.
Yeah, I know it got, I know it got resolved. I just couldn't remember if it started out in the Planning and Zoning Board or whether it went straight to the Appeals. But anyway, that's why I'm interested because it's wanted, been wanting to be involved. And this looks like a real kind of crucial group for a town like Long Meadow that's got so much historic and preservation land all around it and within it.
Members of the Planning Board have questions. Mr. Petrick?
I'll ask one. I'll ask the million-dollar question. Long Meadow is built out. Long Meadow is going to hit the tax ceiling. And Long Meadow has a lot of land that could potentially be developed to obviously enhance the revenue for the town. Are you aware of those projects? And I'm not asking for an opinion on it, but I just want to make sure you're aware of that. We think of ourselves as a built-out town, but this is, these are some interesting projects coming down the road.
I know there's some historic buildings on Route Five, the one White House there that was made over into apartment, no apartment, sorry, offices. I followed that quite closely. I know there was an argument put forward for some solar power to be put in. I think where the new, either as part of the new senior center or where the old senior center is. I don't know what the plans are for that particular property. And I'm also interested in those kind of debates going forward. It's a tricky thing with a town like Long Meadow that you've got, again, this kind of historic value to a lot of the properties. And yet, as you said, we have the highest, I think, the highest mill rates in Massachusetts. And because there's not much else you can raise money off of except for property taxes. Those are real serious issues, how to balance those two out.
I don't know, Bruce?
Bruce, are you muted? Unmuted?
Mr. Petrick, I'm Don Holland. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Walter's been chair before me, and so has Bruce.
Hello, can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Oh, okay. I think I may have inadvertently pressed mute on my phone. I was saying, at the moment, I don't have any questions.
I do. Your background is something that I would, I would think would be very beneficial to the Planning Board. There are several issues before the board, dealing with economics. One issue, gentle to that, is the church next to CVS. Now, there's been a zoning issue, whether or not it could be rezoned from its current. What is it? Was it Walter currently zoned at residential?
Residential.
To change from residential to business. And that would generate some income. The side issue is, once you have a property designated as business, anything can be done to it. Town can't change it back. I guess I quit it in a town meeting. What do you think that the church should be developed as?
I mean, is that property coming available or is it, they moving the church? I wasn't aware of that.
Developers have already bought the property.
Ah, gotcha. Wow. It's a double-edged sword. I mean, it makes sense being where it is. In one sense, to be business because it's right there by the CVS and how the parking lot had been built out, that whole air, that whole space had been, had been broadened out. At the same time, because our house is right across the street and there's a couple fairly new, newly-built ones there. I mean, I would. I think like what you brought up there, Mr. Holland, I'm worried about the precedent of it being business. And then, how does it get developed? You know, I'd want some, from the developers, I'd want some serious conversation about what their plans were before I was able to take a vote on that. Having said that, what's said, once it's business, it's zoned as business. You can't zone it back. In terms of property, are they, I mean, it's a pretty decent-sized lot there. Are they thinking about a couple houses? Are they thinking about some apartments? Again, that raises a whole other issue.
Actually, this is Bruce Colton from the Planning Board. They actually came in front of us with a plan for, I guess you'd say, office and retail shops. Though, at least in my opinion, they seem to be cramming more onto the property than was appropriate. You may or may not be aware that any business development in town has to go through the actual building plans, have to go through the Planning Board under Site and Design Review. And we would have to, it requires four votes to approve Site and Design Review. And the builders can't get a building permit without the approval of the Planning Board through Site and Design Review.
Gotcha.
So Carl, your answer is correct and should be vague because obviously we would, you would vet this and you made, you made your point. You're going to vet it through a process of interviewing and discussion and presentation. So I don't want anybody here to come to a conclusion about something that hasn't even happened yet. I think you guys are in a lot of trouble.
I'm an economist. I'm like the guy in the front of the roof. I have lots of hands.
Me too. I'm an economist too, so we got two in the room here.
Oh, gosh.
On the one hand, and on the other hand?
Yeah, that means Walter and Apple will never reach a conclusion if you have two economists together.
That's like lawyers too. All right.
That's true.
Thank you.
Any other Planning Board members have questions?
Mark Swaven. Mark Gold.
Mark, you got a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I do. I'm not an economist and I, so I get to ask the question because the issue comes down to something of of personal preference or opinion. And that is, I'm going to make it general rather than ask you very specific about a project. I think that's inappropriate to make this based on a project. But the question is growth versus character. Because it's not just a project, it's multiple projects. You know, it could come down, while you're on the Planning Board, to Turner Fields, which is, which is not a park. You know, do we want to put a shopping center on Turner Fields? It could come down to, so the question is, you know, do you prefer to see growth in the town of Long Meadow? Or do you prefer to see the character of the town of Long Meadow maintained even if it forgoes growth, which requires us to just maintain things the way they are?
And I'll do the best I can to give you a King Solomon answer with that. Growth is important, but growth at the cost of the character. And to be quite blunt, because I've done work with Enfield, to become Enfield, not attractive. I think people are attracted to Long Meadow to live because of its character. However, we have to be very forward-thinking in ways to grow up the town's economy and keep it, broadly speaking, within that kind of character that we already have in place. If you don't like that, I can try to like specify a little bit better, but that's, that's kind of where I.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to put you on the spot of particular projects because it's not appropriate.
Yeah, I've been on the spot all day.
General discussion on growth versus character is exactly, is what came up in, in, you know, the Young Mansion came up with the expansion of the, of the Long Meadow Shops, the first, it's what comes up each time.
Yeah. I follow, I follow those debates quite closely because, you know, I drive, going from my house to, I live in Bellevue Avenue to West New England University, I drive by those spaces every single day. And I was really following those debates. I was kind of new to it when the, the property got developed. But no, it's a crucial, I think they got it right in both cases, to be perfectly honest with how it fits in. I was very worried about that becoming a mini mall where the new, where the CVS now is. But they, they managed to thread that needle pretty well, in my opinion.
I have another question.
Go ahead, Walter.
Thank you. Do you attend town meetings?
I've attended some town meetings, not recently. I was a couple early on, and then, again, the, how they were falling in my own schedule, I'd kind of tend to drive past. They would have already started, and I hate, hate going in late like that when I'm on my way home. But I've been to a few.
Yeah.
Hey, Mark, we cut a hard stop at seven thirty for a hearing and another candidate to interview. I don't know, you know, I don't want to cut one person short versus the other, but we got a lot going on.
Is the public hearing rated seven thirty?
There's one at seven thirty, another at seven forty-five.
Is it on the agenda that way? Oh, yeah, I see. Okay. Well, we're not going to be able to interview Cheryl until after those public hearings, so.
Okay, that's fine.
We got about five more minutes. If anybody has any further questions for Mr. Petrick? Yeah, Tom. You're muted, Tom.
We're there?
Yep.
That's okay. All right. Well, Carl, thanks for your interest in being on the Planning Committee. And so when we look at the planning process, for me, you know, the most important step is the one where you look at the long-term effect. And when you look, you know, so when you think of this town and you think about the long-term effect, you know, what are the kinds of ideas that would influence your decisions on a planning board?
Again, how the planning fits in with the.
He's gone. I won't say that's a non-answer. I'd say it's a technical difficulty. Hopefully, he can come back. And maybe not.
That might have been it.
Yeah.
Lynn, there's a question in the chat that you should probably answer. So, Mark, do you want to just go into a, at seven twenty-six, do we want to go to a, just start with Cheryl? Or do you want to just go into our hearing? Because we've got to, you know, we're supposed to start a hearing at seven thirty.
Yeah, I mean, if the people.
Yeah, the lawyers are holding.
Could I suggest we, it might make, this is Bruce Colton. Could I suggest it might make more sense to interview Cheryl now? And so, and then just do whatever is next on your, on the Select Board agenda after that?
But it's a public hearing, so we got to start it at seven thirty. Yeah.
No, actually, I'm not sure. You can't start a public hearing before the scheduled time, but I don't think there's a problem with starting them later.
Is the attorney from No Mall Extract here?
Says he's here, yeah.
Yes, and the applicant is as well.
Yeah, I prefer to stay with the schedule. We've, we've had this happen before.
I can start letting them in and you could introduce the item. And by the time, and then it'll likely be seven thirty by the time you open the public hearing.
Okay.
Partly because I'm not entirely sure I have everyone identified. I'm moving Jason in right now, and then if Jason could tell us who his attorney is. Okay.
So we need a motion and enter into the public hearing at seven thirty under chapter one thirty-eight of Mass General Laws. That No Mall Extract doing business has one-way brewing as applied to the Long Meadow Select Board for a farmer series pouring permit on premises consumption of products made at the brewery located at eight oh seven Maple Road. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? A roll call, Steve Marantz?
Yes.
Tom LaCusa?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Is Josh Levine still on?
He's back, yes.
You with us, Josh?
I don't think so.
Josh, is that you?
Yeah, I, I don't see a video of me.
We hear you.
Oh boy. Well, I'm here. I don't know why there's no video. Oh, there we go.
Okay. Um, so I guess we'll flip this over to, um, Jason.
How you doing?
Pretty good.
Um, Jason, could you just confirm for me that it's, um, I'm just letting you and Ryan in? Or is there anyone else that needed to be in the, um, meeting?
Um, no, Zach, my partner's right here. Um, is for, for, for us. I think that's it. Lon's Ryan's here and we're here. We're good.
Great, thank you.
Um, Jason, why don't you guys describe, um, kind of, you know, your business and, and, and what you guys are looking to do and why you're coming for us?
Sure. Um, so we are One Way Brewing. We, uh, Zach and I, uh, both live in town. Um, and back in May, we opened and, um, brewery over on eight oh seven Maple Road for takeaway can sales only, um, with a state license through the state of Massachusetts. And now we're looking to expand our business, um, and open a, uh, on-premise taproom to where people could sample our, our product and our beer. Um, mostly because our customers want us to. Um, we've had a lot of requests for it and, um, it was, it was our natural next step.
Yeah, so to maybe jump in here, Ryan O'Hara and Bacon Wilson on behalf of, uh, One Way Brewing here. And I, I think that, you know, maybe I can anticipate some questions from, uh, the select board, especially because this is a little bit of a unique type of, uh, business entity that's coming before you in that they're the holder of one of these farmer brewer licenses, which is a pretty unique class of liquor license created by the Commonwealth to enable people that either own a farm or are using local farm-grown products to brew beer with those products and, uh, as part of an agricultural endeavor essentially sell it at retail for off-site consumption. And in recent years, the state took out from the general section twelve liquor licenses, the type that, you know, you're probably most familiar with, and moved over into that farmer brewer's license, the ability for the local licensing authority to grant permits for onsite consumption, uh, in essentially a taproom function. What those permits allow the brewery to do is only sell their own beer, uh, for onsite consumption. That's integral to the model of a farmer, of a farm brewery in that they can only sell their own products. So really what you have here, some local guys, great local business, using local ingredients to make their own beer. They're just looking to sell it on the property. You'll note as you go through the application, they have some anticipated potential hours of operation, all of which actually fall within or are less than the maximum, excuse me, not even the maximum, the statutory minimum window that has to be allowed with liquor licenses from the eleven to eleven. You'll see they're looking to operate from about twelve to ten Mondays to Fridays, eleven AM to ten PM on Saturdays and on Sundays from twelve to six. The idea here, like they said, is to serve their existing customers in a way that those customers are really asking for, to be able to sample the beer on premises. To be very clear about what this isn't and couldn't be, because I do understand the town doesn't separate out beer, wine, liquor licenses. This isn't a all-purposes liquor license to run a bar onsite. It's about the furthest thing from that. It's really to enable them to serve the products that they're making locally, uh, just in a nice, comfortable taproom scenario. They have gone forward, uh, before the ZBA and already gotten their approvals related to the parking, uh, that would be necessary for the use under this liquor license. So the ZBA did address and approve that. Uh, really, they're, they're set to take off here. They're really hopeful and excited for what this business can, can bring to the town. And beyond that, as you have specific questions, I, I think we'd be happy to answer them. Uh, but you should have all the application materials in order and I think this is an exciting opportunity for the town to bring in, uh, one of these, their very own farmer brewery taprooms. So with that, uh, any questions from the board or if there's anything more specific you'd like to hear from Jason or Zach? I'm sure they'd be happy to explain to you.
Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, I have a few questions. First question i- is what's the alcohol content of the, the beer that you currently brew or that you plan to brew?
So it, it varies, Mark, from recipe to recipe. Um, most of ours average between, um, I would say five and seven percent. We do make some that are, um, as high as eight and a quarter. Um, but, uh, we will never make anything over ten and a half, um, which is less than wine with less than, you know, anything else that you can get pretty much around.
Thank you. Yep. Is, are, are either of you now or will, which do you plan on being, uh, certified with either, you know, Safe Serve or, you know, whatever it is?
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. Yeah, so both, uh, both of us are, are, uh, currently, um, taking trips, uh, TIPS training course. Um, and we actually have a TIPS trainer, uh, Tina D'Agostino lined up to train, uh, any future employees that we plan on bringing in. So, um, you know, that, that's really, we look at it as that's protecting us more than anything else. Um, to make sure that people are not being overserved and people of the proper age are being served.
The other thing is, some early talk, and I don't know if it was from you or other people, about, you know, having some kind of a system where, you know, people might go next door and buy a pizza or buy some Chinese food and bring it in and, and eat while they're, they're having liquor and, and having beer in your, your establishment. Is that conceived, that planned or is that not allowed?
Um, I, I don't, I don't, not that I know that there's anything against it, but, um, I, I know that, uh, we don't plan on having a restaurant, um, or serving food. Uh, there is a restaurant, uh, on both sides of us, uh, as well as a couple of other ones in very close, uh, proximity. I know a lot of taprooms in, uh, in the area and, and beyond, uh, allow people to bring food in and, uh, eat it onsite. Um, so we have kind of talked about that as an idea. Um, but, you know, we, I don't think we're really set on everything yet. I think there are some things that we're still in the planning stages of.
My final, is are you familiar with the other bylaws of the town of Long Meadow? I, I point out, for example, that, you know, we've gone by there a couple of weekends and found an awful lot of illegal signs on the, on the, uh, uh, you know, right-of-way, which is the town's right-of-way that I think could, you know, but, but things like that. I just want to make sure you're up to date on all the town's bylaws.
Yeah, we, we, we had, um, some officers come to our place of business last Saturday and ask us to remove the signs per complaint. Yeah, and we, and, and since then, um, we've kept our signs in the parking lot. There is a certain amount of setback. We haven't really measured it, you know, that there is a spot for us to put our signs on our lawn, but, but beyond that, yeah.
The goal is to, to be part of the fabric of the neighborhood. We're not looking to, to, to create any situation here where we're, we're, you know, we both live in town. So we don't want to, uh, uh, you know, create a scenario where, you know, we, we can't walk into the local Big Y and, and grab food, you know what I mean? Like, uh, I, I think this is something that, you know, would be good for the town. Um, I think that, uh, it's been, you know, good to this point where a lot, a lot of, uh, people that live in town are, are customers and that they're happy with what we've, what we've brought to the table so far. So, um, I think this is just, you know, giving, um, more of what people are asking for.
Uh, yeah, uh, so what are going to be your hours of operation?
So, Tom, our, our plan is to start, um, from Thursday from four to nine, Friday from four to nine, and then Saturday from eleven to nine. Um, we both have day jobs and, uh, you know, we're not looking to make this a, uh, you know, hundred and twenty hour a week kind of career. Um, this is just something that we do as a passion project. We love making beer. We love, uh, 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 having people come and try our beer and, and give us feedback on it. And, you know, we, we felt like this is a good opportunity, um, to, to bring that to, um, you know, the town of Long Meadow.
Okay, and as far as, I've been to, uh, breweries where they have a tasting approach where, you know, people get so many of these small cups that they can drink and taste the different beers. Is, is that what you're going to be doing or are you going to have both that and, you know, like pints available too?
So if I could just jump in here only to make sure we're very clear on a legal aspect as well. Um, there is two different things under the Farmer Series Pour licenses that they could be coming before this board to ask for. One is a full pour license that's talking about sales of their own product at the property. And one would be to come ask for permission to do samples that would not qualify as sales. So I'll let the guys answer as to what they're looking to do, but I just want to make very clear that the, the request for the license is for sale of, of full pours. But go ahead, go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, so I, I think Ryan said it perfectly right. Um, our goal is to be able to sell full pours. Um, obviously if people want to sample the product, they can do that as well. Um, but, you know, um, yeah, I mean, if, uh, we, we will do flights with, uh, multiple small, um, testers. Um, but we also hope to have, um, full pours as well.
Okay, because the, you know, I don't know if you're aware, but, you know, all of the other locations, I mean, we have some liquor stores, obviously, but all the other locations in town that serve also have food available. So there are sort of restaurants with a bar service.
Right.
Um, and you will be a bar service completely. And so you're really moving into new territory for the town and, um, you know, it's just something we need to think about. Um, in terms of, you know, that's a big, that's a big difference, you know, we, you will be our actual first just saloon, you know, in a sense.
Well, I, I guess, Tom, I, I mean, I don't want to look at us like a saloon though. I mean, our, our primary business is a brewery. Like our, our, we're, we're a manufacturing of a product that's going to allow people to also, you know, purchase a beer or two. We're not looking to be a, a bar. I mean, we say all the time and when, uh, when people ask us about this, that we want to be someone's first drink, not their last. That's not our plan. We're not looking to be open extended hours where, where people are, are, um, getting out of hand. We're, we're hoping that they'll stop in and, and have a beer or two before they go to dinner with their, with their spouse or, you know, their friends or, you know, it's, that's, that's the kind of atmosphere we're looking to have. We're not looking to have a saloon style atmosphere. So, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't, that's really the only way I could answer that.
Okay, thanks. So you're going to actually brew, you're brewing right on that location? And then do you, do you put it into like, uh, growlers, cans? Do you have like a variety?
So we can once a week, Tom. You're welcome to come volunteer, check it out. We love to have people over and, and, uh, it's about three hours on a Tuesday or Thursday night, depending what night we do it. Um, but we'd be glad to show you how we do it.
Okay, all right.
And on that front, just as a point of clarification, that too, the, the canning and the sale of basically bottled or canned beer, that's something that comes part and parcel of the farmer brewer license that they already got back in the, the fall of, uh, twenty twenty. Excuse me, twenty nineteen, no, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
It's hard with the years these days. I don't know about you guys.
Okay, well, thank you. That's all my questions now.
Got you have a question?
Uh, I got a couple. Are, are you planning on having any entertainment in this space?
I mean, Josh, it's a super small space. If we did have any entertainment, it would be maybe a guy in a guitar or a woman in a guitar. Um, we're not, it's not, uh, again, it's like, we're not looking to have big bands and, and, and that kind of, uh, uh, atmosphere. Um, I mean, I'd like to think that if, if the, you know, people of Long Meadow that, that come in and, and, um, you know, come to our, our, our place, want to have a band, that we could have something, but I don't, we don't have really a lot of room for, for a, a big, you know, a big band.
Okay, my, uh, second, I, question, as you guys know, I do a lot of liquor licensing in the area and the, I see the business assets, five thousand dollars you have listed on the application, it's really the startup cost. It seems really low to me. I don't know where you are in the process.
Well, we've done a, a bunch of our build-out during the initial brewery build-out phase, right? So we really don't have a lot to do at this point. So it's really just kind of, um, uh, finishing out what needs to get done, um, which is some furnishings and stuff like that. And we've, we've already kind of been, uh, accumulating some of that stuff in the, in the hopes that we would be opening a taproom at some point. So, um, but again, we're not, it's not, it's not a huge space. The walls are done, the ceiling's done, you know, um, we gotta actually build a bar, but we already have our refrigeration and, and taps for that, um, and all of our plumbings in and everything that we had to do in our initial build-out for the brewery. We kind of set the stage for this eventual growth spur.
And, uh, just on that, uh, I know it's not, uh, a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but the ABCC generally wants to see that money now. Uh, they don't want, they don't want to hear that it's, um, coming in, it'll be the next couple of months rent or, or months income. Uh, they may want a, a bank statement from you.
And we absolutely could provide that.
Yeah, so that's, uh, you might want to talk to Lynn about just supplementing it. Uh, that's a very, should be easy enough thing to do. I think I, you know, I want to avoid you getting this kicked back by the ABCC, which happens to me occasionally and, uh, it's frustrating, so I don't want to slow you down.
Well, I appreciate that.
Uh, yes, uh, one or two things. One, I'm assuming, this is an assumption that you're not farmers, even though this is some sort of foreign thing that you're licensed. Um, secondly, do you, since you're brewing this beer, you don't need your, a separate license to actually brew on premises to sell? This is basically anyone can brew beer and so, whatever it is and sell it without any kind of state approval? That's a question. And then since you are a brewery, another question is, do you sell this anyplace else? Do you do retail? I mean, do you, you know, sell it to, uh, packer stores after you can it? Do you sell to, uh, other, other, uh, bars in, in the area?
If you'll let me jump in on the first one, or maybe it was the second part of that question, I'll let the guys answer the rest. But as to the license, it is a, a full state application and approval from the ABCC to obtain that Farmer Brewer Series license in the first instance that allows for some wholesale and for retail for off-site consumption. So the answer is yes, just by getting that license, that operation's approved. But it's not without any sort of state approvals, right? It's a full ABCC application process for the brewer's license. And then the guys can talk about the rest of that.
Yeah, and ju- and just to add on that, that, that was done, Steve, in twenty nine, um, twenty twenty. So we did go through all that, uh, the TTB approval, which is with the, the government approvals. We went through the state approvals to, to get that portion of our business, um, approved. And, uh, we were granted that in the fall of, uh, twenty twenty. And we renewed our license, um, in December of twenty twenty for twenty twenty-one. So we're good through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and it's a yearly, um, uh, renewal.
So someone came in, someone came in and actually said, uh, I see what you're doing, the way you're brewing this beer. This is, this is A-OK as far as we're concerned. Is that, is that how the licensing goes from being able to brew your own beer to sell?
Well, there's a lot of steps to it. It's, but yes, and it's long and the short of it, I would say that that's the, 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 the quick and easy, uh, answer. But yes, there's a lot of steps to it. There's a lot of hoops you gotta jump through. It's not an easy process. Um, there's a, a lot of, and, and Josh has, has done this, it sounds like, so he could probably attest to that. But, um, it, it is something that, um, takes time and they do a lot of vetting. And you have to submit floor plans and equipment and, uh, you know, you have the financials and, you know, nothing has not been vetted, to put it that way. And then as far as the, um, selling wholesale, uh, we're only a three and a half barrel brewery. So really that means we can, we can make about thirty cases a, a week, okay? And there's more than thirty cases an hour that goes out of the bottle shop across the street. So I don't think that, you know, we're really. So I don't think that, you know, we're really um gonna be producing anything that is gonna, that we're gonna go out and probably sell to package stores. Um, our our
It's it's presently not part of our business model. Our our business model is for, currently is at at retail for takeaway cans and then future would be the the pour, the pour room sampling. Um, but that that farm and brew license does permit us to sell to a restaurant to put our beer on tap. So if we chose to do that in town, um, you know, that that particular permit allows us to do that.
All right, Mark, a comment. I don't know if you had anything you want to say, Mark Strange?
Um, no, do you have something that you want to add, Tom?
Well, I just, you know, the the time of of, you know, like ending at nine o'clock, four to nine, you know, eleven to nine. Um, I feel a little more comfortable with that, but I would feel a lot more comfortable proving this if if they had formed a, if you could form a relationship either with either the two restaurants next to you or a a local food, you know, truck or something so that people could then have some food um on the purpose, promises, I think that, you know, or you could, you know, get your own, make your own pizzas for, you know, but but I think that um, you know, I'm just a little concerned about not having any, any food. No, no relationship with, you know, no established relationship and and that's sort of a gray area right now. Um, I know you're considering it, but you're, um, you know, it was gonna make it easier for me, yeah.
So to, so yeah, I answered your question. So our, uh, we feel that the brewery will promote, you know, more more traffic to both of the restaurants on the sides of us. And we've had conversations with them, but that's all part of our business plan. You know, and you know, and we we plan to have conversations with other restaurants too, you know? But, you know, that's all part of our business plan. So, you know, Jason answered the question, you know, earlier. Um, you know, we would allow um patrons to bring in slices of pizza um if they wanted slices of pizza. We don't plan to serve them that pizza, but we want them to be able to to order that pizza. And it only benefits the restaurant next door. Um, you know, they've been really, there's a lot of camaraderie between these brothers and us as well as the uh as Riggio since we've opened. Um, and um, so, you know, we only want them to succeed and they only want us to succeed. You know, it's a, it's a, it's perfect. I mean, they always get a bump of sales when we have our can, can table day.
Yeah, well, that's nice to hear. Only just because I think that people, you know, when you're drinking on an empty stomach, it just, you know, you get in trouble pretty quick. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Yeah, Tom, if I just um, maybe Ryan can jump in on this as well, but uh this just came up in East Long Meadow. Uh, they have a brand new brewery, uh, Brew Practitioners. And I know there's a lot of discussion with the town on whether they could require food. And I I believe that the answer was no, but I, I don't know if Ryan followed that more closely. Um, but I I don't know if we have uh the ability to require that.
I would say basically from the applicant's perspective, understanding I do represent the applicant. It, you know, that's not the considerations of whether there's onsite service, isn't something that really comes into the liquor licensing regulations. And to the point that you all are certainly given a broad amount of discretion, but need to make a decision based on the application before you and the legal standards that apply. I think what you, what I'd really just direct your attention to is, and you know, just a little about my background, not this really matters, but I was in food service for a good long while before I was a lawyer and having firsthand served drinks to people and been through tips training and and worked in restaurants. You know, nobody's got something more to lose in issues of service of alcohol than the people that are running the business themselves. And more often than not, what responsible liquor service really comes down to is the person that's there serving the liquor, right? And that's not to be trite, but I say that to say, you've got two guys here. They're the only two that are gonna be there running the taps. And I think you've heard from them their their vision for the place and the responsible attitude they ta- plan on taking towards this. And, you know, certainly it's for you to decide if you think this is uh, if you, if you take them at your word, but I I suggest you should. You've got two guys that are trying to run a pretty limited pour operation here. And there's very few industries that are regulated as heavily as as service of liquor. And uh, you've got two people that are gonna be monitoring it very responsibly.
Mark, if I could just make a comment, Ryan, I appreciate that those comments, uh, but Town of Long Meadow loves new businesses. We encourage new businesses. We support new businesses. But we're gonna verify. And just so you know, now COVID has slowed us a little bit, but we generally run compliance checks through our police department twice a year. And every one of them finds a a finds an establishment that serves underage. I don't ever want to see it from your, I hope I never have to see it from your establishment, but every compliance check that I've seen while I've been in Town of Long Meadow has determined at least one establishment in town that serves somebody underage. So yes, there, I I appreciate the fact that you're responsible. I appreciate you have the most to lose. Please, please, please be that responsible. Don't be one of those those or organizations that show up in front of the select board.
Oh, I mean, all I can say to the, to that comment, Mark, is this, that um, this business is just Zach and I. I mean, this is something that we do as a passion project. Um, for our can sales, we ID everybody that comes through and buys cans from us. Um, because we want to make sure that they're of age and that we're we're following the proper guidelines. It's gonna be one of our names on the bar managers or I I call it bar manager uh on the license. So it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna be ultimately responsible. So um, we're not doing this as a livelihood, so we have a lot to lose. I mean, we, like I said, we both have day jobs. Um, we, we um, we don't, we don't have, I I guess, the only thing I say is a lot, a lot of risk for us. So we're, we're not taking that lightly by any means. And also, like I said, we live in town, so we're not looking to um, you know, create a situation where we're, we can't walk around town either. Because we agree, it's a great town. It's a lot of kids that ride their bikes around town and stuff like that. We want to be responsible business owners, but I think you have to give us the opportunity to do that. I think then the time that we've been open, we've been responsible business owners. And I think we plan on doing that. The fact that, you know, um, we've been open for sixteen weeks now and barely anybody's known we're there. So that's, I I guess, good in that sense.
Any other questions? So uh, when would you guys open up to pour?
Sorry?
All right, Walter, let let them answer my question and then we'll bounce it over you, okay?
Mark, can you say your your question again? You you kind of cut out on us.
Yeah, so when would you guys be able, open to pour?
So once we got approval from you guys, we would kind of go into the uh, a rapid build out kind of phase. So we probably, depending on when the actual license came through, um, would depend on when we'd be available. I don't really know the timeline from when you guys say we're good till actually when we're ready to serve. So I I don't know how to answer that, but if, say, we were okay tonight, then we would actually go into the, to the remaining construction of that we have left in the, in the taproom, just the kind of final build out. Um, which is probably be, you know, four, four to six weeks, hopefully.
Thank you. Walter?
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm just curious. I really haven't, wasn't following this until recently and then when I saw the public notice and I noticed that it's a farm series pouring license. And so I researched that. And what I find interesting about it is uh, this is a form, first of all, it's a, it's a, it's not a restaurant or a bu- bar. It's actually a form of manufacturing. Um, so I'm wondering, right there, we don't allow manufacturing in Long Meadow technically. So the the farm series pouring license was created, I think, to promote, um, I think, uh, local, locally grown produce and products. And and so my question is, these gentlemen are talking about a a business plan and right now it's a passion, but my question is, can this expand and literally take over that entire facility, including the pizza shop, and become a bigger venue that we're not even foreseeing right now? And I don't know, Mark, um, Strange, I mean, you're on in planning in in Agawam. I don't know what you guys look at a- as these, these farm series pouring. Maybe I'm just paranoid, but um, it's just my, my comments. I I've, I have no answer to this.
Well, Walter, I I I'm sorry, I I, are you, are you on the select board or are you on the Z B A?
I'm on the planning board and uh you and I met once with uh Robert Barquette, I believe, um, uh, to discuss actually your business plan.
Right, okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Well, we, we went before the zoning board of appeals who approved us um, in town as a, as a manufacturer because the beer is incidental to our business. They also kind of figured out in that process that making bread is also manufacturing. You know, so, you know, that bread restaurant isn't here anymore, but they were a manufacturer and they were selling their bread outside of town. Um, you know, so I mean, it it, but it is incidental to our business. Um, but that was
To, not to cut you off, Zach, I think there's a couple of things that at play when you talk about these farmer series breweries in terms of what case law, and it's very limited, but what what stuff is out there. And the analysis that I've seen in the past and actually done relating to a different town uh and looked a little bit at again today, is the interaction of these types of breweries with forty A section three and the agricultural exemption from local zoning, which I think answers a lot of questions about how these things end up opening as of right, even in towns that aren't zoned for any sort of business or or commercial use whatsoever. I also think that when you're talking about, you know, future plans, one, I don't think these gentlemen have anything like that currently, but two, even beyond that, you know, to even come to this point, they had to get a Z B A approval that the proposed use has the correct number of parking spots. At the point there was gonna be any proposed expansion beyond what's being proposed now, further approvals would be required. I don't know what sort of other, you know, triggers under zoning might be triggered if there was an expanded use. But there may be those other controls. And then finally, there are conditions that can be placed on licenses, such as, you know, any future floor plan would require coming back for further, you know, there's ways to to address that, but I think there's already some built-in controls that prevent the scenario you're talking about, and which would just be all of a sudden, it's occupying the whole building and you're dealing with something very different.
This license is going to say a thousand square feet. Um, any other, and that's what the license itself says, that's what the application says. Anything beyond that, I I assume we don't want a a beer factory uh right on that street there, so um that can be affected then. And I know that we, licensees have to really hold, stick to that license. Uh, like a golf course, if you want to sell beer on the golf course itself, you have to have a license for that. So uh, it is pretty specific.
So one last question, Mr. Chair. So then uh Ryan just said that, so you're gonna become ta- a tax exempt property there? Uh, under the agricultural statute?
I was talking about the the forty A section three exemptions from local zoning. I'm not talking about the uh tax classification statute.
Most agricultural uh applications are tax exempt.
Yeah, o- often they do go get that tax exempt qual- qualification. But all I was talking about, just to again be clear, was the forty A section three zoning exemptions.
Gotcha.
Thank you. I just want a more question. So uh, if you could just tell me, what are the local producers of your, you know, your hops and all the, um, what you're using to make the beer? Were, are they from local farms? Do you, can you identify what farms they are?
Um, well, well, we, we use quite a few. So um, we use Thurl Farms, which is in Windsor. We use um Valley Malt, which is in I don't know, Tidley Amherst area. We use uh five, five, uh, five, five star farms for hops. So we, you know, I mean, there's nobody directly in Long Meadow that um grows hops. Well, we do use mulberries from my yard for our mulberry milkshake IPA. So to be honest with you, we actually do have a product that's right here and manufactured, not manufactured, but grown right here in uh, in Long Meadow, Mass. And if you go on our Facebook page, you can see me picking um mulberries from my tree, because uh, that's the only way to get them, because they don't sell them wholesale.
Okay, thank you.
So by I guess by that right thing, we kind of qualify it, Walter.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Are you ready to open up to the public? So if the, if there's anyone in the attendee list that wants to comment during public comment, you can unmute. Or you raise your hand and I can move you in. I am moving in Mike Healy.
Hey, Mike, do you have a comment? Uh, you also, we also need your, your address. Name and address, please.
I think he's muted.
Was there anyone else, Lynn?
No, no one else.
I guess I'd be looking for a motion uh to approve the farmer's pouring license permit.
We have to close the hearing first, Mark.
A motion to close Thank you. Second, discussion. A roll call, uh, Steve Morantz?
Yes.
Tom Lecusa?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Josh Levine?
Yes.
Mark Strange, I'm a yes. Okay. Um, do we have any discussion amongst the board members?
I would move that we approve the application.
Any discussion? Okay, um, Steve and Morantz?
Yes.
Uh, Josh Levine?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom Lecusa?
Yes.
Mark Strange is also a yes. Thanks, guys.
Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Okay, so I'm assuming Eversource is here now?
Uh, it's possible. Uh, I don't think we received confirmation from Eversource that um someone was attending. So if someone from Eversource is in the attendee list, if you could please raise your hand.
Oh, geez.
I do have someone, there's no name identified, Mark. I can move them in if or allow them to talk at least and we can figure out who they are.
Sure. That'll be fun.
Hi, it's Carla Cacho from Eversource. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Carla, can you spell your last name for our records?
Yes, it's spelled C A C H O.
Thank you. Carla, are you expecting anybody else from Eversource?
No, just myself.
Okay, so can I get a motion to um enter the public hearing? Second. Um, any discussion? Uh, roll call, Steve Morantz?
Yes.
Tom Lecusa?
Yes.
Josh Levine?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange is a yes. Um, okay, Carla, we'll, we'll flip it over to you and you can um make your introduction and describe the project. And then we'll have some questions for you.
Okay, um, requesting permission to install a thirty-five foot pole on the town taken in front of one sixty-one Forest Glen Street, I believe in Long Meadow. Uh, we currently have a pole across the street. I'm looking to bring over secondaries to that pole on the town taken. Um, the location has been moved from the original plans that I From the original plans that I sent into ten feet closer to the driveway. Um, of the customer from that pole, the customer is going to go underground to the property.
Can, can you explain, Carla, when you say we've got a diagram, when you say ten feet closer, do you mean ten feet? East, west, north, south, you know, when you say closer, is that ten feet to, to the east, so that moves it? Downward or to the right on the picture that you've got, or is that ten feet closer to the road?
It's gonna be, it's gonna stay the same distance, um, to the road, but it's gonna move closer to the driveway. So closer to the intersection.
Mark, if I could just ask a question, what, where is the, where are the wires coming from to feed this pole? Is it from the existing pole?
No, presently, the, there's an overhead service that runs behind the houses on Roseland Terrace. And Forest Glen, so there's a pole over on Laurel Street. And it jumps over behind the houses in Roseland Terrace. Between Roseland and Forest Glen and it feeds ho- overhead behind the houses. The service feed for Forest Glen right now goes underground. From that pole line behind the houses crosses a property line and then hits the back of the house. Um, over in Forest Glen, so I'm looking to remove the underground conduit. And then go overhead from the front of Forest Glen where presently we have a utility pole already at that location.
Boy, did I not follow that, I, and I drove the area. You know, to, to, to look for that because there are street, there's a street light there.
Right, exactly.
There are no overhead utility wires, all the current wires are underground. So you're gonna bring wires over ground to that pole from where?
So right now we have just overhead secondaries, uh, feeding that street light. But I'm gonna bring over primary cable from Park Drive. So at the corner of Forest Glen where it turns over into Laurel Street. We have overhead facilities with primary voltage, so I'm gonna bring in. One span from that pole at the intersection, it's gonna hit the pole. That has a street light on it because it's the right height requirement. We're gonna hang a transformer there to bring down that voltage for usable voltage for the customer. And I'm gonna hang a wire across the street to the proposed new pole location by the customer's driveway.
So can I, can I assume then that what you're talking about is on the diagram that we have? You know, and I'm just gonna do east, west, north, south here, that you're gonna come across. Forest Glen Drive and then, you know, to, to the north, if you will, from, from Roseland or. Across North Forest Glen Drive and then come east along an existing pole. And add this pole and then go back underground to feed the house across on one sixty-one Forest Glen?
You got it, exactly.
So we're adding overhead wires to the town, Long Meadow.
Right, exactly.
Why wouldn't we, you know, with all that we've gone through in this town to try to remove overhead wires? Why would you not bring them underground from the, the current supply?
The, the location.
For trees to fall on these wires, just to ask it for, cause this is heavily wooded area. With, you know, we've had several trees fall in the last couple of storms along Forest Glen.
Right, understood, uh, the wa- the service right now is coming underground, is crossing. Uh, property lines and it's coming from a location where it is difficult to get access to the pole lines. In the event, the service that's there at this point in time gets hit by a tree or we need to replace equipment. Because it is up against the back of the houses over on Roseland, meaning in order for a line crew to get out there. We have to cross multiple property lines, we don't have an accessible driveway. Um, and it can present a problem when trying to restore power. So as opposed to leaving the service underground from that location that is difficult to obtain access to. I'm looking to go overhead from the street where in the event. A branch does knock down one of the cables, we don't have to drive a multiple customer properties and cause damage. Or have difficulty getting to our equipment to restore power, we can easily assess it from Forest Glen. So although right now it is a request to extend overhead facilities in the location and. Put in a pole, the idea of this is to minimize outage times or damage to property due to the existing pole line that is hidden behind the houses.
And, and the current electrical feed to this house is from the rear of the house, is that what you told us?
Correct, so if you were to look on Google map, you have, uh, behind Forest Glen, you have Roseland Terrace. You have a row of houses on Roseland Terrace. The pole line where one sixty-one Forest Glen is being fed from. Is a pole line that runs parallel to the houses on Roseland Terrace, so. That section vectors, you guys are familiar with the area, is also heavily wooded, there's a bunch of fences, some of the poles I couldn't. Walk up to myself, I literally have to, uh, go under bushes and climb over shrubs and. Customer property just to at least look at the pole line that is feeding one sixty-one Forest Glen. And that's just myself, if I need to roll a bucket crew because a tree knocked the pole down. Or anything of that nature, now we're having difficulty assessing our equipment, it's kind of pretty much trapped back there. In a location where it's very difficult to, to gain access to walking, never mind trying to get a bucket truck. In the event we need to repair equipment, so, uh, for that reason, I'm looking to extend the overhead services. So we don't run into that issue in the future.
Okay, I thank you, I, I, I understand that the houses in that area are all fed from an above ground line. That run between the backyard lot lines of those houses and, and. So is this, are they increasing the service to this house that are going to from two hundred to four hundred amp, amp, amp service or something? Like that, is that?
Right.
This additional line?
You got it, so they're upgrading the electrical service at this house. And part of our requirement is to move the facilities outside, meaning the meter socket itself. So the meter is gonna come outside, we need to upgrade the cable size for this location because it is old. It's underground, it's not in good condition, it's been there for a really long time. But with that comes the obstacle of digging up, you know. The customer's property in the back of Forest Glen. And then trying to get a truck back there, which is, will be almost impossible to get a truck. To work under those conditions because it's just yard and there's fencing and there's trees everywhere. So as opposed to going down that route, I, you know, I'm hoping that we can get it overhead on Forest Glen instead.
And what's the probability that the houses between one sixty-one Forest Glen? And Roseland will eventually have their service converted to front feed service, so you eliminate their back feed service. So we'll have a string of wires either crossing over or going under Forest Glen Road.
Well, you have, the probability of every house upgrading is slim to none. Maybe a couple houses upgrading from my experience is more probable, um, but we do have different locations. In that area where we can feed from, for instance, uh, Laurel Street has overhead facilities at this point in time. And there are some underground facilities on Roseland Terrace as it is. Um, so we do have some options, but right now we are only looking to upgrade. Um, according to customers that are putting in a service change, relocation or an upgrade, which. This is the only house that I have in the area right now is the house on Forest Glen.
Yeah, and I apologize, this is my last question, why do, why can't you put it to the existing pole? That's forty feet to the north and then just run an extra forty feet underground?
We, I need to locate a pole on the customer's property. And if I'm gonna locate a pole somewhere in the facility where they're gonna feed from. I need to get a bucket truck within a ten foot distance, but on a drivable surface. In other words, I don't want a bucket truck to drive on the customer's lawn whenever we need to service the equipment, so. From Laurel Streets to bring a pole over, it means it has to be on their yard. And we don't have access to it because of where the driveway is located. So the pole location that I'm requesting is A by the street, which is Forest Glen. And B by the customer's driveway so that we can easily have access to it.
So this will be the only pole on the south side of Forest Glen Drive then?
Right, exactly, and it'll be next to their driveway and the, between the tree that's there on the customer's property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark. Mark, um, okay, yeah, so, um, yeah, I guess as I, you know, I think of what that area looks like. I mean, this area of Forest Glen, um, there's, when we have, and there's various home tours. Uh, some of these homes are on those tours and they look very stately and they're beautiful. And so I guess I would just say I'm, I'm not supporting this. I, I think that you should run a wire underground, it was happened once, it happened again. If things need to be moved temporarily and then replanted. Uh, you know, I, I think if the homeowner is looking to increase their service, then they should understand there's some. Uh, there's, it's not gonna be an easy process, but I, you know, I think if we put this pole in. Next thing you know, we'll have four other poles on that street. And it's a very aesthetically beautiful part of our town and I just don't think we should put a pole in just because it makes it easier.
That's Steve.
Uh, yes, just sorry, I, I, I need to understand a little further, I, I think Mark Gold's questions did some clarification, so. But this one pole is for one customer, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, now I suspect that this customer is not paying for this pole?
Yes, there is a, a customer fee associated with some of the work.
And it's the customer, but I would assume this can't be an inexpensive proposition.
Right.
And so I assume that all rate payers are gonna be paying to help this one customer?
No, this is a customer service, the customer is covering the fees associated with this request. This is not something that gets passed on, uh, to other customers, cause this is a customer service request.
So the entire cost of putting this pole in and all, what other you're talking about is gonna be borne by this one customer on Forest Glen?
Right, they pay a span of overhead secondaries, um, and they pay for the pole.
And means I, I skipped the, but, okay, and labor as well.
Right, well, the Eversource picks up some of the costs, we don't charge the customer for everything. Because we understand that we're bringing facilities over to improve the reliability of the customer service and to remove it from the right of way. Um, so the customer will pay for the portion that Eversource charges their customer, which is one span of wire and for the pole. Everything from the pole going underground back onto the customer's property is gonna be between the electrician and the customer. We don't supply that material and we don't provide the work for that either.
Okay, and this is, and your belief or the customer's belief is this is the best way to get. Uh, so they're upgrading their service, I'm still not quite sure why an entire new pole is needed to do what, I'm not quite sure what they need to do. That requires. Get a wires, even, they, they, Eversource doesn't wanna bring it from the rear of the house where the main wire feeds the, the, the area. So what they're gonna do instead is gonna go literally around the corner, down, down Forest Glen and feed them from the front, front of the house. Cause they don't wanna feed them from the rear of the house, it seems to me there's a pole in the rear of the house, they could just run another. Hundred one amp wire, two hundred amp wire from the rear of the house, but they don't have a bucket and they don't wanna do it.
Well, we, we have a bucket, we can't drive from one sixty-one Forest Glen. Cut the, the property line on the back and go into the other customer's property with a bucket truck, there's just no access there. Nor can we drive from Laurel Street and get on the grass for the house behind Forest Glen to go to their backyard with a bucket truck. Or two bucket trucks to then replace the equipment that's back there to provide the upgraded service. That is the issue I had at this location, it's not merely, uh, wanting to put an overhead because we don't wanna do the work. Is realistically speaking, getting a bucket truck across a customer's yard into their backyard. From Forest Glen, Forest Glen or Laurel Street where I had difficulty walking myself to the back of the property. Is, it's gonna be quite the task and you're looking at property damage for the customer's lawn that we get on. And issues retain, um, pertaining to vegetation, so now we have tr- you know, trees that are in the area. We have plants that are in the area for the customer's backyards, both customers that are blocking. The utility equipment that we have at that location, so it's gonna be requesting permission for vegetation management and tree trimming. And then also requesting permission to get on the customer property with a heavy bucket truck. Just to provide an upgrade of service for one sixty-one Forest Glen.
Okay, so this, so, okay, so we got, I just, I understand, so this is one pole with overhead wires coming from Laurel Street. For one customer on Forest Glen. And if some customer a little further down towards Long Meadow Street has the same issue. Then we're talking about another pole because I think that's, the pole will be there, I mean.
It depends on where the feed is coming from, so for one sixty-one Forest Glen, it is so far back. On the portion of the property and it's so unassessable that I, I cannot imagine trying to get a bucket truck back there. If a house later on decides to upgrade and they have better access to the facility that they're being fed from. Then we can maintain it as it is, but in this particular case, the pole that has the riser for one sixty-one. You cannot access easily with a bucket truck, say one of the houses in Roseland has a driveway. And the pole is behind their driveway, some of the houses, when you drive back there, you can see a utility pole right behind the driveway, then yes, we can leave it as it is. We can reach it from the driveway to the house on Roseland and not disturb, uh, the customer's property on either end. But in this case, the pole that feeds Forest Glen cannot be accessible from a driveway, it's blocked by trees and plants. And there's multiple properties in the middle where we cannot easily drive with a bucket truck. So it's gonna be dependent on the property, where it's fed from and what the location looks like at the time of that request. If any other customers were to ask for an upgrade of service.
One last question, and the upgrade of service does what, as opposed to getting a new, a new, a new box in? We're going from nineteen fifty service to two thousand and twenty service. Uh, the upgrade of service will do what, I mean, for, I mean, is this, is this safety in terms of what's going on in the house, I'm just.
Right, it, it has to be brought up to national electrical, that's where the electrician works with the customer. And in our case, we have to size the cable that's gonna feed the customer for the proper amperage that they're requesting. Meaning it has to be the right thickness, cause otherwise, if you don't upgrade the cable that feeds the house, but you upgrade. The, let's say, the, the circuit panel inside and you're drawing more amperage that the existing cable can handle. That cable's gonna burn up, and as it exists right now, it's going underground from the back of Forest Glen. Through vegetation to a pole line that is covered with leaves and trees from overgrown customer trees. So as you can imagine, if you upgrade the service and add the wire and it breaks out on fire, we're looking at a safety issue. Which is another reason why we would prefer to move it to a location where it's more accessible and not crossing multiple property lines.
Other question. Uh, you, you've mentioned a bucket truck and the difficulty with the bucket truck, but, um. Is that just to get to the top of the pole that's existing, I mean, don't people wear spikes and just climb the pole?
The poles that are back there, uh, should also be replaced. Whenever we're gonna add new equipment and the pole has been there for an extended period of time, it's not in the greatest condition. Because as it is, it is overgrown back there, you have branches and trees overhanging our equipment. Um, and it is not easily attainable, so I would look to replace the pole back there, which means I gotta get a bucket crew back there. In addition to, you have secondaries, you have transformers back there that may need to be upgraded as well. So it's not just a matter of climbing and connecting a new service cable, you're talking digging a trench. From Forest Glen, crossing the property for Forest Glen and the house behind, all the way to the pole that feeds the service. Replacing the riser, replacing the pole, transferring the secondaries over, uh, just for this one service to be upgraded. Which is typically what we do, is just typically, uh, you don't have services crossing. To kind of like a right of way behind a bunch of houses with no drivable access.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, yes, Kosh?
I had a question for the marks, I, I don't know the peremptory procedure here, but would it be possible for us to table this?
I had a question for the marks, I I don't know the peremptory procedure here, but would it be possible for us to table this, so we can take a look at it? I know it's a public hearing, but I.
I'm okay doing that.
I'd like to see what's going on and get my eyeballs on it.
I think that's a great idea.
Josh, that's why I walked through it, because I knew, because we, I've been there, done that, and I walked around there the other, the other day to to just to see this thing, and I generally kinda do that, I mean, if if Eversource is in no hurry and the owner's in no hurry, you know, we can, we can certainly do that, you know, my big question is, is why, you know, Laurel Street has above ground wires and I still don't, I I've got Google Maps up in front of me in my other.
Yes.
I don't understand why we're feeding it to a wire on, to a pole on Forest Glen and underground instead of from Laurel Street underground there. It it's just, you know, my my comment earlier when we, when we talked to a applicant for the planning board was, you know, it's growth versus character. That's exactly what we've got here. The character of Forest Glen was, was no above ground wires. And now we're gonna introduce above ground wires and once we open that, that door, you know, we've got the poles, we're gonna be putting above ground wires for everybody there. I think, you know, the the question is, why is there an alternative to not use above ground wires? And why hasn't that been selected? I know it's cheaper, I know it's easier, but it's not the character of Long Meadow, and so, you know, Ms. Cacho, my, my question is, you know, if 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 we wanna take another look at it, I I'd suggest you also go back and say, what can you do to maintain that character of no above ground wires on Forest Glen?
Well, if you're looking at Google Street right now and you look at the front of the property, one sixty-one Forest Glen, there's already overhead wires and there's already a pole across the street from that location. So I'm not looking to bring in something that isn't on Forest Glen already, it's on Google. I'm looking at it right now, you can see it. What I'm looking to do is from that pole that is existing with overhead services from Laurel Street is to change the size of the cable that's coming in. And I'm looking to then extend the overhead facilities from the existing overhead pole on Forest Glen across the street, uh, to put a pole next to the customer's driveway and then underground from there. But that pole is already existing with facilities from Laurel Street.
Right, I understand that, that it, the pole, there's a pole with a tre- with a streetlight on it. But I gotta tell you, my version of Google Maps shows no above ground wires at that site.
If you look at, I have Google right now and it's showing me, um, twenty nineteen, if you look at it from closer to the intersection of Laurel Street and it is showing the pole at that location. Even, um, Street View twenty eighteen has the pole with the streetlight in front of the the customer's driveway.
Yeah, I I'm seeing as well, I I I run past this area all the time and I I, so I just haven't, now that we've talked about it, I think I would have a better idea of what to look for. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's it's just hard for me to picture what's going on behind there. I I I share a lot of Mark's concerns, uh, but I, it's hard for me to uh, really picture this and I I think I need to look behind the house on Forest Glen.
Sure, that's fine. Um, I'm not sure what the customer's expectations are at this point in time pertaining to the upgrade, but considering the circumstances, you know, I can have a conversation with the customer and explain what the concern concerns are during this petition hearing and maybe we can meet out there with the customer and we can go over the existing feed where it's coming from, I can walk all of you back there if you wanna see, um, just like I did myself, and then we can walk over to the front of the property and go over why I'm proposing to extend the overhead facilities at that location. Does that sound good?
The the only, the only comment would be is if we got with more than three of us, it's gotta be a posted meeting, right?
Well, then I would leave that up to you, if you wanna leave it posted or not, I'm okay with either or. Uh, bring the customer up to date tomorrow morning and you pretty much tell me what you wanna do and then I'll work with that.
The Roseland looks pretty far away and I see a house on Laurel Street. Is there, wouldn't that have a closer, some, some sort of better access there?
What you wanna look at, it's, um, not just the street, but the driveway for one sixty, sixty-one Forest Glen. So we have to set a pole within a certain drivable distance and, you know, if you have shrubbery or plants in the way, then the request would be for a trimming or change of landscaping, so I'm trying to minimize the impact of the landscaping at this particular property and at the street. I recognize it's a beautiful street, I don't wanna ask for shrubbery to be removed or fencing to be changed. Uh, so the location that was selected was with that intention to minimize how much I'm requesting for this customer to change of their landscaping, but also taking into consideration that facilities that are installed should be at least ten feet from a drivable surface, so I have to maintain them closed to the customer's driveway. The other option is also, um, the the customer is going to be installing and owning the underground facility. So Eversource right now is looking to just go overhead across the street with a new pole. Everything from that pole underground is gonna be customer owned and maintained. The customer also has the option, if the town agrees, to go under the road, cut the road and install condo it and go up the existing pole that's there with a street light. I would still have to upgrade the cable that is feeding that particular pole, but there is an existing overhead line there to just be upgraded to a higher voltage with a transformer and then the customer can cut the road and go underground. Keep it in mind that if the customer goes under the road to the existing pole and that cable ever fails, they're gonna be looking to cut the road to then make repairs on that cable going underneath the road. So that's something we can discuss on site as well when we meet up.
Mark, I think it's interesting that the customer thinks enough of aesthetics that they're gonna take the wires underground from this pole to their house, but don't care enough about the aesthetics about the street and that's, that's our business. So if they're concerned about aesthetics, I think we ought to be concerned about aesthetics. I'm, I know I'm arguing the point here, but, but, you know, the issue is, do we wanna start putting above ground electrical feed lines with transformers on poles as opposed to having the one or two electrical streetlight poles which have, if you will, the minimum, minimum electricity needed to run a streetlight and don't have risk that if something falls on the wires, people lose their houses. You know, I, we can, we can certainly go there and walk it, but you know, my opinion isn't, isn't gonna change, and it's the same as Tom LaCuce says, is that they gotta come up with a, an, a, a alternative that doesn't put above ground wires on Forest Glen. That's my, gonna, my opinion now and it's not likely to change.
I mean, you guys, you guys let me know if you wanna meet over there, if you're gonna decline it, um, it obviously it's out of my control. Um, if you wanna meet up, let me know and we can schedule an appointment. Otherwise, you know, the customer can then follow up with the town or with me regarding a redesign option, but maintaining the facilities from where they're being fed in terms of outage restoration in the event that there is a storm with high winds that causes damage to the line that's back there. Uh, my concern is minimizing outage times and minimizing the the disturbance on another customer's property when upgrading a service or making repairs. If, as you can imagine, if we were to say, hey, can we drive on your lawn with a bucket truck or a couple bucket trucks? Every time there's an issue with a service or there's an upgrade, I don't think you would be happy with that as well, so you know, I have to take that into consideration when designing a new service feed for a location. Do I, as a customer myself, want a bucket truck on my lawn and on my property where I have planted and decorated and landscaped so that it looks good whenever there's an issue? Um, so I'm hoping if we meet over there and I can walk you to the pole that has a service and you will see what the impact would be to the other customer's property, getting a truck back there, then maybe you would understand why the need for this location to go overhead on Forest Glen is necessary. I don't think anybody here would agree we're having a bucket truck driving on their lawn for somebody else's service.
I I guess I would disagree, that if my neighbor needed to put a bucket truck on my property to fix their electric service, I would do it knowing that grass is one of the easiest things to grow. You know, I don't, I don't see why it's, it's that big of a challenge to just replace grass and and, uh, you know, and, you know, and I I I guess, so we di- we disagree. I would, I would let my neighbor have a truck drive on my lawn.
I agree with Tom.
In this case, I say, if you guys are up for it, let's go meet up. Let's look at what's there in terms of property and how to logistically get a truck back there, accrue us to work on equipment, and like I said, this is out of my control, it's entirely up to you guys if you wanna prove it, reschedule it, deny it, just let me know how you wanna proceed and I'm open to to meeting anyone out there to discuss this and go over the facilities that are presently there.
I don't know if a, a public hearing would be, uh, necessary. I I I'm gonna move, I move to continue the hearing, I just wanna go out there and look at it myself. Um, so i- if people wanna reject it, uh, we, we don't have to continue the hearing, but I, I'm moving to continue the hearing.
All right, Josh, I would say that you would need an accurate map. If the map that we have tonight with the application isn't accurate, then you'd need.
Well, I I can piece, I I just wanna go see what's going on back there, where the, the actual lines are.
Well, I can meet.
Even though you're an elected official, Josh, you're gonna need owner's permission to walk on their property. We can only walk on the top, front, five or eight, ten feet, something like that, so.
Yeah, I I understand, yeah.
I mean, if it's okay, I can meet Josh at the location. The map that I submitted is only pertaining to the equipment that we're looking to install, not to the equipment that is behind Roseland. Um, so if you guys give me permission, I can meet Josh out there, we'll walk it through, you can postpone it and reschedule and then we'll meet up again.
I I'd like to go as well, I I think I'm I'm leaning towards, uh, towards Tom and Mark, but I I I wanna, I wanna see it myself rather than just looking at this picture on Google Maps.
I I second, uh, Josh's motion that we continue this hearing. However, whoever wants to go see this when, not violating, uh, you know, posting laws is fine, but I, I think it's time to end this conversation tonight.
Yeah, Mark, just in case three people show up, so we're not.
Yeah.
No, no prob- I mean, you're gonna schedule it anyway, so you, you schedule it forty-eight hours in advance.
Yeah, if I see any of you on the street anyway, I'm going the other way, so.
Yeah, can I also ask though that Eversource provide us not just the map of this pole, which, you know, but also where the current wires are and, you know, a bigger map and then where the proposed wires would be?
Yes, I can show you the inner.
Issues with wires.
So just to clarify, I can show you the, the existing Eversource facilities behind Roseland, extended from Laurel, and then I'll show you going up Laurel and then what's existing overhead to Forest Glen, that way you kinda have the whole piece together. I can draw that out for you and and submit it for the next petition hearing or ahead of time.
Yeah, that would be great, I, you know, have both the existing wiring, but also, you know, kind of a dotted, here's our proposal to put in this pole and this additional wiring, that would help a lot.
I I can do that and I'll overlay the design over like an aerial view of Google with a satellite image so that you can see the houses and the way that it looks with the equipment there. I think it'll be easier for you to get a good idea of of what we have out there.
Carla, can you coordinate our site visit with the town manager's office or her assistant?
Sure, that's fine, um, just to give everybody a heads up, I'm not available on Thursday, I'm available Friday at any point in time. Um, so I'll send an email over and whoever wants to follow up with me pertaining to the appointment, um, then we'll just meet, meet out there, whatever time works for you.
I'd have to do it next week sometime.
Okay, and and when next week approximately?
Early next, or probably Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, okay, that works for me. I'm I'm going to be out on surgery the first two weeks of October, so if we can do this, um, either by the end of this week or next week, I think it'll be best for the customer because they are waiting for the upgrade of service, so. I mean, if we can work that out, then, um, I can have one of my coworkers work the rest of the job so that the design can go or change depending on what we agree on.
Did we, do it, I need a second to, uh, continue the hearing?
Steve seconded it.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Roll call, um, Steve Marantz.
Yes.
Josh Levine.
Yes.
Tom LaCuta.
Yes.
Mark Gold.
Yes.
Thank you, Carla, you did a great job.
Hey, you're welcome, I'll send the email out in a few minutes and if someone can please reply, um, by tomorrow, that'd be greatly appreciated just for at least a preliminary day that I can work with so I can plan ahead.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Uh, Mark Strange, you should probably vote also.
Uh, did I not vote? Mark Strange, yes.
Great.
Um. Okay, under resident comments, then do we have any resident comments?
Anyone in attendees would like to comment, please raise your hand and we will move you in. I'm moving in Gary.
Okay.
And Gary, if you can state your name and address, please.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, Gary Levine, two, two zero seven Williams Street in Long Meadow. Hi, good evening. All aware of the proposed gas pipeline and the gas metering station project to be located on a Long Meadow Country Club in a residential area near an elementary school with the pipeline ending in Springfield. This project flies in the face of Mass- Massachusetts. Efforts become less dependent on fossil fuels as we move to a more distant, more sustainable forms of energy. In twenty nineteen, our town approved two provisions adding strict environmental safety and health standards should the project move forward and blocking its placement in residential areas. Gas metering stations can emit pollutants through leaks and blow-offs, create noise and has the potential, however small, to explode. Placing this station in this location is unconscionable. In March of that year, at the Energy Facility Siding Board Meeting in Town, over forty residents and public officials expressed their opposition to this project. No one spoke in favor. In addition, Attorney General Healy's office asked the Federal Energy Regulation Commission uh, to look at reasonable alternatives for the project, including upgrading existing pipeline structure. This would lessen the environmental and social impact of the project. Two gas companies involved have not explained the need for placing a two hundred PSI pipeline. Others have said that it is redundancy for the existing sixty PSI pipeline, unless they have other unresolved, revealed plans for this pipeline. By at least one measure, Tennessee Gas has the worst safety record for its type of business over the last decade, having reported more significant incidents than any other such entity according to the Louisville Courier-Journal in twenty fifteen. Just this past June, a high-pressure gas pipeline owned by Tennessee Gas ruptured in West Bloomfield, New York, sending a plume of smoke and pollutants four to five hundred feet in the air. The residents in town are now questioning the future safety of this pipeline. That's from Spectrum One News, July first, twenty one. Last month, Connecticut, Connecticut AG Tong started investigating Eversource's marketing practices of using high-pressure tactics to entice customers to convert to natural gas. The Connecticut, the Connecticut's Consumer Council stated that Eversource would sink to such base tactics speaks volumes about their current desperation as a company, that's from the Hartford Courant. Springfield claims that Eversource owes the city nearly forty-four million in property taxes and interest. How can this company be trusted to conduct itself in the public's interest? Eversource planned to have public hearings on this project later this month. They would control the meeting and the questions that will be asked and discussed at the meeting. Since they have moved the filing date of the project, those meetings have been postponed. Such a one-sided hearing would have no merit. And gratifies it the Select Board is considering holding a public hearing on the project. Springfield plans to hold its own hearing on the project. The citizens who will be affected by this pipeline project must be heard in a fully open forum, not one produced, directed and run by Eversource. Many in town believe that the project was dead in the water. Contrary to that belief, Eversource is moving forward. Pollution, noise and safety issues are the same as they were in twenty nineteen. Just last week, someone posted on Facebook asking people to join the efforts to stop the gas project. One person responded that they thought the issue was settled two years ago. Another said that this is an example of NIMBY, NIMBY, not in my backyard. This is not a case of NIMBY, it's a case of NIABBY, not in. This is not a case of NIMBY. It's a case of Niabby, not in anyone's backyard. Thank you for your time.
Mark, point, point of order, and I appreciate Mr. Levine's comments, but. We did, we did not close the hearing, the Eversource hearing, and we still have another, uh, interview to conduct for the planning board. I thought you were asking for public comments about the hearing on Eversource.
Yes, I would, I apologize. That's what I as- assumed it was the, uh, resident comments. That's my error then. I apologize.
It's okay, Gary. It's, that's, that's our fault. We, we didn't close the, um, the public hearing. We continued it.
I, I apologize. I'm done, I'm done. Thank you.
Um, so while Ron, if, if there's any, any other resident to make a comment, we, let's, let's allow them to make a comment and then we'll go back to, um. The second planning board interview.
Don't see anyone else who has identified that they would like to speak.
Okay, so, um, why don't we bounce back to, um, Cheryl Thibodeau, if Cheryl's still on?
I just moved Cheryl in.
Hey Cheryl.
Hi, how are you?
How you doing?
Good.
Um, so sorry it's, uh, taken us so long. This is unfortunate. It's not uncommon for us. We're trying to get better.
No worries.
So, um, a- as we, we asked Carl, um, if you could just kind of summarize. You know, why you're interested in the planning board and, and what, and, you know, what compelled you to submit an application?
Sure, of course. Um, we've lived in town for just about six years now and I've been involved in a variety of activities, but on the periphery. And, um, you know, looking to our longevity, uh, likely longevity here in town. Uh, when the planning board opportunity came up, I was excited. Um, what better a place to help shape. Our decisions about our long-term, our long-term vision and, and plans.
Um, does any, do any, uh, planning board members have questions for Cheryl?
Hi Cheryl, I'm Don Holland. I'm the chair of the planning board. Be- before I was chair, Walter Gumm was, was chair. Before Walter was chair. It was Colton was chair and the three of us are here.
That's wonderful.
I liked your background. I thought it was very interesting. I thought it would, it would lend itself to things that the planning board does. What do you think about your back? What of your background do you think would be beneficial to the planning board?
I think, uh, a lot of my background will be beneficial. I'm sure that you saw in my resume and cover letter that I have. Uh, a background in negotiation and alternative dispute resolution, which I can see, uh, just sitting through the meeting tonight would be incredibly helpful. And, uh, some of the conversations that maybe had. Um, I am a claims adjuster. I handle general liability and medical malpractice claims. I often have to delve in and, and make, uh, decisions and feel comfortable with those decisions, mitigating risk along the way. And so I think that that would be a helpful fit to the, the board and, and decisions that are being made.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just say, I'm not going to ask you a question, I'm just going to make a comment that, um. I, uh, I was sort of thrown into this in two thousand and one and. I had no background in planning, but, you know, again, the passion and interest in, in the town and what was going on. But the, the biggest sell was that, oh, we only meet once a month. And that was a cool thing because the ZBA, the, the select board, uh, school committees, they all meet more. And, um, I jumped right in and now I, I got to enjoy it. So here it is twenty years later. So. Um, it's, it's really a passion. You have to have a, a real, um, interest in, in, in where the town is and where it's going to go in the future. So, um, that's what I would expect from anybody working on the planning board.
That's a wonderful comment, Walter. I share your enthusiasm. We love the town and, and, um, the idea of being able to. Make meaningful decisions that, you know, continue with the town's character is, is a, a great opportunity.
Anybody else? Yes, Mark.
Asked the same question I asked the last candidate, growth. Growth or character? What, what's your take on the town along there?
I think both, right? And, uh, Walter, I'll refer to your June, uh, comment where you paused. And reminded everyone that we have to think critically about, um, especially developing open space in town, which is at a premium and. And sticking with the town's character and making truly meaningful decisions with regard to development and, and changes. And so I guess, uh, it's kind of a non-answer, Mark, but, um, you're really being thoughtful about our approach to planning and development in town.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is sort of fun. You can, here you can sort of, um. Sort of vision back to the past and think of things you did and didn't do. And I'm thinking of like two positive things in my career. One was, uh, the Young Mansion. Uh, we saved a historic building. And went through a lot of terror on that. I mean, that was, um, we weren't, uh, we weren't getting phone calls late at night from angry people. But it was a, it was a very contentious situation. And my other one was Chandler Avenue. Um, there was a huge development plan to, uh, expand Chandler Avenue way down to Route ninety-one. And, and, uh, on, on a street that was absolutely, um, goes back to the, uh, uh, eighteenth century. Was, was, it was not going to work. So we, we defeated that developer. So. The planning board does, um, we do get our, our chances, even Long Meadows built out, but we're going to see down the road a lot of. Uh, fights, arguments, debate. And when we do public hearings, I just want you to know that, you know, uh, we. Have to sit and hear everybody, um, speak their piece. And, you know, it's, you, you really have to be impartial. And at the end of the day, um, we deliberate and, and conclude. So that's just, um, again. My ten cents of my view of the planning board.
Walter.
Yeah, uh, well, thank you for, uh, you know, your interest in this position. Uh, you know, it's an all-male board right now and, uh. So I'm glad you're willing to step forward and, um, even after this meeting at all. But, uh, you know, what do you think you bring to this committee that's going to, perhaps enhance it?
I think you, um, made a great introduction to the point, Tom. I do bring a female voice to the table. Um, as I stare across out at the Zoom today, you are a group of, of wonderful males that, um, you know, beat our town in, in a great way. But I do, you know, hope to bring a, a female voice and, and perspective and it's, it's important for our town.
And, and in terms of the, the other thing would be, you know, I, I started to ask that question the last candidate, but he got cut off. But, you know, in the planning process, for me, the most important step is like the long-term effect of, of any decision you plan on. Um, and so one of the things would influence your thinking in terms of what you see as long-term effect for decisions to town might face or.
I, I mean, we live in a quintessential New England town and so I'd want any decision that we made to stick with the character and charm. That we all know and, and love and live here for. And so I would, uh, likely allow that to shape decisions that are made.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark.
And just a quick question. The planning board is generally an elected position? Would you plan on running for re- reelection if you were appointed?
Yes, of course.
Josh. Uh, so when I got, uh, appointed to planning board and then elected, when I first got appointed, I, uh, thought I was going to go mad with power. And I would be able to run the town. And it turns out that planning board does a lot of recommendations. Uh, we're similar to the select board, uh, where town being former government. Um, are, are you aware of, uh, how the, the process works for. The bylaw changes or recommendations and are you involved with, uh, town meetings?
I do go to town meeting, although I have been prohibited for, you know, a variety of, um, you know, reasons that just I could not attend. But, um, I, uh, did in preparation for today's interview, read, uh, uh, many of the past planning board, uh, meetings. And so I'm well aware of, um, you know, the process and the guidance that we give and that, uh, you know, with the Williams Street expansion, for example. I understand that that is going to abode at town meeting.
Anybody else? All right, so I think we come back October fourth for a vote, right Lynn?
Correct.
Okay. Cheryl, thank you so much for, um, putting yourself out there and, and saying a few words tonight and, um, good luck to you.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, well, good night.
Thank you. Thank you. And, uh, Don, do you want to make a motion to, um. I'll make a motion to adjourn the, the, the planning board, uh, from this meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing this discussion, let's go to a roll call vote. Walter?
Yes.
Bruce? Bruce, unmute yourself.
Oh, he's, somebody muted him maybe. I don't think he can mute himself, can he?
Bruce?
Can you hear me now? Uh, yeah, I vote yes to adjourn.
Okay.
And myself, Don Holland, I vote yes to adjourn. Thank you very much, Mark, and the rest of the select board.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Take care. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, two hours into this mess. Uh, where are we? Select board comments? All right. Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I, I attended the meeting of the, uh, recycle committee. This past week and they had some information that they asked that I pass along to the town really through the select board. And that's the purpose of this, of, of, of these comments. And it, they hopefully aren't too long given the. Comments we just had. Has to do with recycling and town recycling. Because when we began the discussions about recycling some time ago, maybe a year or so ago. You know, the, our budget showed that we were actually paying to recycle curbs, do curbside recycling. And everybody was saying, well, why am I separating it? You're paying more to recycle than you are to, to dispose of the trash. And, you know, that was true at the time, but that's changed. I just want to give some people some examples of what's changed and why it's changed. And they provided me with some, some pretty good information. It all has to do with the pandemic that when the pandemic hit, you know, the, the major source of recycling, particularly paper and cardboard. Were schools and, and commercial, uh, you know, sources of, of that. They pretty much took up all the. The recycling needs of the country. Well, schools shut down and re- commercials, property shut down. And then people started buying a lot of smaller stuff online and then the demand for cardboard went up. And so the whole e- e- economics of, of cardboard and, and recycling flip-flopped. And so what they saw as a, a real uptick, uptick in demand of cardboard and cardboard recycling. And so the, 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 the process is that really in, in, uh, you know, twenty twenty, which is when we signed a new. A new contract with a municipal recycling facility, which has a, it's MRF or so, it's kind of colloquially known as the MRF. When we signed a, a, a contract with the MRF, the, you know, rather than just pay them for recycling. Our partner, who was the state at the time, worked through that they actually have a, what they're calling a processing fee. And they set a processing fee that was pretty high, ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Uh, uh, was the processing fee for, for materials going to the MRF. And at the, at the first couple of months, you know, the MRF sold recycling material for nothing. And so we had a net cost of ninety-three dollars and fifty cents a ton, which is even above our trash disposal costs and it seemed pretty high. But if you fast forward, I'm just going to give you a se- couple of things that all of a sudden, uh, shortly thereafter. You know, the, the amount that we got paid for recycling hit twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. You know, which still cost us a little bit in that money, but not too bad. And then the, by December of twenty twenty, in the midst of the pandemic. Recycling hit forty, uh. The recycling costs we got hit forty-three dollars and five cents. But today, we're actually, they're actually selling the recycled goods for a hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. So we actually have a, a net revenue to the town of thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents a ton. And so the, the message is to people, if you've stopped recycling or relaxing your recycling. Cause you thought you were saving the town money or because we were paying more for recycling than we were paying for trash collection, that has ended now. We actually make money off of recycling. We pay a lot of money for trash. And so the message of the recycling committee is to encourage people in town to go back to aggressively recycling. Because it's worth a lot of money to the town. We not only save our seventy-seven dollars of disposal. But we're getting thirty-eight dollars, uh, of, of net revenue. And so th- it's really a swing of a hundred and some odd dollars a ton. So that's kind of the message and I appreciate the time to bring that along to people in the community. So people understand that the recycling, you know, is kind of like any other market. It's got its ups and downs. And right now, and for the next, you know, foreseeable future, it's up, so we should recycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. That's really important information to know. Uh, anybody else? Yes, Steve?
Uh, a couple of things. One, thank you, Mark. That's really, that's really good and excellent information. Um, quick comment, uh, not, since we had a long conversation with Eversource. In terms of Eversource gas, I did make some comments about, uh, Claremont Street last time. I would hope that. Uh, Lynn and at Eversource, I think told one of the residents, well, you know, we, we kind of learned from this experience. Well, if you're living in Claremont, having Eversource learn from their experience is not satisfactory. Uh, they need to actually, um, address the issue. Um, and then thirdly, on Eversource, I believe we as a board asked them to come to a meeting on October fourth. I believe they told us they could not do that and would like to come at a later date, the eighteenth. And I believe that we should just not have them come at all for a while until we know exactly what they're doing. Also. Uh, Springfield moved their meeting from September twenty-third to October fourteenth. So I think that at this stage of the game, we might want to tell Eversource that, um, to be they can come on the fourth. We're not quite ready for them on the eighteenth and we will be back in touch with them or worse, not a fact.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Um, so I realized that we skipped over one other agenda item, which was the board of committee appointments. Um, so I guess I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll read, um. Read the memo that Mike left for us. Um, the following appointments are made based on the annual June interviews. This appointment is to fill a vacancy due to a resignation by a board member. Um, the candidate's name is Gerald Duquette. The board is Park and Rec Commission. And the opening is for a three-year term expiring in June twenty twenty-three. So do we need a motion to appoint Gerald?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Gerald, um. You know, let's do it. We put him on the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term expiring June of twenty twenty-three.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
When, when did we interview him for this? Was it, I know we did, because he interviewed for one, but I know there's a window and I just wanted to make sure we were within that window.
Um, I don't know what the window is, but I do know that he was part of the, um, the, that litany of people that we, that we interviewed. A couple of months back.
Says based on the annual June interviews. So it'll be July, August, September. Would be within three months. I don't know if that's good.
What is, do, does anybody know what the window is?
Let's, let's vote and if made a mistake, we'll interview him again.
I like it.
Okay.
Okay, let's do, uh, uh, we, we got a second, right?
Yeah.
Uh, roll call vote. Um, Steve Morantz.
Yes.
Josh Levine.
Yes.
Tom Makuta.
Yes.
Mark Old.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations to Gerald Duquette.
You need to vote also.
Oh, that's right, you're not forgetting. Uh, Mark. Oh, that's right, you're not forgetting. Uh, Mark Strange, yes. I'm not capable of doing that many things at once. Uh, okay. Now, we've all been waiting for the town manager's report.
I have to wake up now. Um, so tonight, uh, COVID update. At the time of the publication of this memo, there were 23 cases. Happy to say that as of this afternoon, there are 19. Um, of those 23, as of Thursday, uh, 13 of them were breakthrough cases. This number is still holding pretty true. We're about 56% um, breakthrough cases. Uh, the Board of Health has scheduled a meeting for September 27th to review the data, current cases and assess the current state of the town regarding the virus. Flu and COVID vaccine clinics, we've contracted with Big Y to run our town flu clinics. Schedules being developed and will be announced as soon as, uh, we have it confirmed. We're also exploring the possibility of offering mobile COVID-19 vaccine clinics. This is very much in the early phase right now. I don't have any, um, prospects on the horizon yet for being able to do that. But if we're able to pull something together, we'd love to have one at the fall town meeting. Um, and the fall town meeting, plans for it are being developed. The town moderator attended the August 16th Board of Health meeting to talk with them about plans for the meeting. The Board of Health ranked their preferences for meeting location. The first was to hold the meeting outdoors. The second was to hold it at the DPW garage. And the third would be indoors at the high school like, uh, normal. Um, I will respectfully ask that the select board not set the meeting location until October 18th. Uh, we will have a lot more information then. We'll be about two weeks out from fall town meeting. And that's the, um, minimum amount of time that we have to, uh, close and post the warrant. The cable license agreement in follow-up conversations with Attorney Epstein from, since your last meeting. Uh, Eps, Attorney Epstein did not see the need for the select board to take a vote on Comcast proposed competitive equity languages, language, sorry. Um, negotiations on the license are continuing and he's going to provide further updates to us in October. The street line painting contract was awarded to Pro Finish Lines in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Work is expected to begin soon. Pondside Road resurfacing, the flap ramp, this, um, came back and Mass West Construction was the, um, collective bidder in the amount of four hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Work is expected to begin on this relatively soon, uh, and needs to be completed by the end of October. Uh, street paving contract was awarded to Palmer Paving in the amount of one million three hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Paving schedule is being finalized and a list of streets will be posted to the town website as soon as that's available. And the Board of Registars, House Bill 94, was signed by the governor officially revoking Long Meadows' exceptions of Mass General Law, Chapter 51, Section 16A, which established a Board of Election Commissioners and reestablished our Board of Registars under Chapter 51, Section 15. And, um, I didn't make it onto my report, but I did want to make sure I drew your attention, uh, to the Skate Park Public Forum, which right now is scheduled for Tuesday, September 28th at 7:00 PM. I do not have any details on whether it's remote or in person, but as soon as that's shared with the town, we will post it on the website and social media. Because I know that, uh, there's many people that would like to attend to learn more and, um, provide comments. And that is all I have for an, uh, report tonight.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions for Lynn? Get some.
Uh, well, I just have a couple of things. One is, uh, I, I see that, you know, as far as the, uh, Parks and Recreation Department, they're looking at, um, getting the daycare up and running. And, uh, you know, that's exciting because there's a lot of folks who've probably been really needing that service. Um, and I hope that, you know, they're marketed properly. I know that they, they just let people know in the schools, they probably get, uh, uh, access to people with small children. Uh, the other thing is in the report from the fire department, fire department, our August report, it talked about addressing the, the use of foam to put out petroleum fires. It contains PFAS. And PFAS is a chemical that, um, you know, is a contaminant. And basically it's, it's very effective and, and the chief, you know, he knew, he found out it was in there and he said, okay, you know, let's see if we can get something and that had, doesn't have these PFAS. And there's, there's the same chemicals that show up in our water that we get concerned about. And so he found a foam that had a lot less, uh, but there was no alternative product. And now he's found a foam that's PFAS free. Uh, of course, when you remove something, there is a charge of war. But, uh, you know, I commend his effort because the, uh, you know, PFAS does affect health in terms of, uh, growth, learning, behavior, infants and older children, uh, pregnancy, um, our body's hormones, cholesterol levels, immune system, increase the risk of cancer. There's a whole variety of things. And so, um, we're lucky that we have a fire chief that is up, is, you know, just pays attention to this stuff. And, uh, so I want to commend the chief and his, his steps. And, uh, I just hope we can fit it in the budget. But, uh, other than that, uh, thank you for your report, Lynn.
Anyone else? Yes, Steve?
Uh, well, for talking, uh, town reports, I, I have a question. Uh, the finance report talked about, I don't know, I, I don't know exactly who is using this water, but the water usage was up eight percent more than budgeted. I, I don't, I assume that's town water usage and I, I don't know if that's because of the new DPW building, but I thought we're under, I thought as a community, we're modestly under the gun about our water usage to begin with. This doesn't sound like we're moving towards the right direction with water usage up eight percent more than budgeted and maybe that can be addressed.
Yeah, there's a warrant article when we get to that part of, um, the meeting, uh, that we're asking, um, for additional funding to help cover the cost of that.
Right, but what about, um, the usage aspect? I mean, there's the cost aspect of it, but there's the usage aspect of it. Um, I assume that's, it's up, not so much of cost, but because of usage.
Uh, I think it's both, but I do have the finance director, uh, in the attendee list. If you wanted to talk to her now or we could wait until, uh, the town, uh, meeting warrant discussion.
Well, given the nature of this meeting, I think we can wait, but it is, I think, water usage in this town does appear to be a concern. So.
Steve, budget doesn't mean absolute numbers though. I mean, we budget for a certain amount of, of water usage across the town. That doesn't mean we're budgeting for, for eighty gallons per person per day or fifteen gallons per person per day.
I'm not even sure this is, I'm not sure this is for the town usage. As I, you know, it was just in this report. Water usage up is something that I think we ought to look at, but not, I get the point that not tonight. We can see what the finance director has to say as we discuss the warrant article. I don't know the meeting.
Hey, anything else for Lynn? Hey, moving on to new business, old business. Um, Charter Review Update after reviewing prior meeting minutes. Uh, we determined that there's some outstanding recommendations from the Charter Review Commission that have not been voted on. I don't know if you, if you guys, um, Lynn, can you share your screen or let me share my screen?
Okay, you should have permission now. I can also bring it up in a minute.
Alright, can you guys see that?
Yeah.
So, um, these ones here that are labeled May 14th, 2019, um, were presented to town meeting and town meeting voted on them. Is that right, Lynn?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Um, the ones that say that there was a select board vote February 3rd, 2020, um, were all voted. Uh, presumably the vote was to send it to town meeting, which it never went to. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Um, so, uh, the first question will be, um, do we want to include these, uh, recommended changes to the charter on the, uh, special town meeting in November? And the sub-question of that is, um, do we also want to include any other uh, recommendations that we ultimately vote on between now and October 18th in the, the special, uh, town meeting warrant?
Are you asking for opinions and comments?
Yep. A lot of confused faces.
If the select board voted on them in February 2020, we just didn't get them to a town meeting, get them to a town meeting. And, and, and focus on, that's, that's a ton of stuff, Mark. Focus there and then regroup. That's my opinion.
You're saying, um, 5.1 through 5.5C, get all those on a town meeting warrant?
That's important, that's my opinion.
That'll add nine.
That'll add nine warrant articles.
Yeah.
Um, to fourteen that we have already.
Well, perhaps we could do them as a consensus and pull them together as one article or, can you do that with bylaws or no? Or with this kind of a?
I don't know if we can with charter changes, but I can look.
Okay.
Yeah, I know it adds nine and, and, you know, that's, that is what it is, but I think, I think it's a, a worth, worthwhile exercise.
Yeah.
It's got, you know, if we wait till the, till May, it'll be fifty.
Yep.
Right. Well, the other thing is that, um, you know, perhaps I think somebody from the community, um, forwarded a motion to make them consent to agenda. You know, as long as it's legal, you know, we could do that. So, you know, Lynn, why don't you check on that? And then you see that, uh, three to three C and, and six to six B, um, those will have to be forwarded to the school. Um, you know, if we're going to ask for feedback from the school committee.
Is that your recommendation, Mark? I know you sent an email about that. You're, you're muted.
Yes, that was, I think we need to, I think the school committee needs to act on those.
Yeah. We may need to vote them before they get into the warrant, but, you know, I don't think we should act independent of them.
Right. Um, so I, I will reach out to, um, to, to Kevin, Shay and to Marty, I'll copy Lynn. And, um, we'll, we'll ask them to, to take a look at those two, um, sections. For our part, um, we need to, do we need to vote? We don't need to vote, right? Because we've already voted. You just got to put them on the warrant now?
Yeah, we're going to vote them as part of the warrant anyway, Mark, so.
Yeah.
No sense voting twice.
Okay.
It does look like, uh, section two dash ten B is a fairly minimal change. Looks like it's just a correction according to the sheet here. Um, I don't know if you have any interest in putting that one forward. And I would just add with those other three remaining ones, although it looks like there's a second sheet, um, any of the financial ones or capital planning, I mean, we do, we have had some significant change uh, in staffing. And so I'm, I'm wondering if maybe having the new finance director take a look at it might be worthwhile at this point.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should hold on to those until, um, after, after November. Okay. Um, so, so any other thoughts on this? The plan right now is to, um, uh, create warrant articles for each of the nine, um, recommended charter changes um, from the Charter Review Commission, um, for the, for the special town meeting, uh, warrant in, uh, in November. We'll also send an email to the school committee and our superintendent about 3.3C and 6.6, six dash six B, um, to get their input on that. And, um, if we have, uh, feedback in time, we might be able to vote on that by, by October 18th. If not, we can push that forward with the, the financial matters after, after November.
Mark, I'm just looking at, I've got the charter committee's recommendations. Lynn, you're right, two dash ten B literally removes the, the changes. It says, the finance committee shall have jurisdiction over the reserve fund, shall conduct long-range fiscal financial, fiscal planning and advise on fiscal policy. And they changed the words fiscal to financial. I mean, that's in both those cases. I think we should just throw that on there, get it done with. We're changing the word fiscal to financial in both the, in two dash ten B. That's nothing.
Okay, that, that works for me. Does anybody else have an objection to that? No? I've seen, seen a lot of enthusiasm there.
So that one is a new one. You may want to take a vote on that one, uh, because.
Take a vote on it as part of the, the, the warrant, Lynn.
Okay.
Then there'll be 10 articles regarding, uh, the charter change.
Those are no brainers.
Yeah. Um, I think that's, I think we're good with this.
What is the note at the bottom of the page? Page two. Um.
Warrant may need to be amended to include changes to two dash ten B voted by the select board 9.8. I have no idea what that means. Nor do I know who wrote it.
I did, and it says that it was voted by the select board on, on nine of, on September 8th of whatever year that was. So, but we needed to have a warrant article because that was not, that included in a warrant.
Okay, so we're good then. That's the vote we were talking about. Okay, so we'll have 10 warrant articles related to these charter changes. Um, potentially two additional regarding the school superintendent and then we'll deal with, um, the rest of the financial related changes, um, at a later date. Sound like a plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, objections made, needed, right?
Hey.
You know, onward. Um, Senior Tax Abatement Program.
I'll make a motion that we extend the Senior Tax Abatement Program to the current fiscal year.
I'll second it.
I do have, um, Director Lyden here to provide you an update if you would like one on the program.
Sure.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Can you hear me? Yep.
Okay, yeah, so I submitted the, um, the application for calendar year 2022 to do the real estate tax abatement program uh, in conjunction with the Council on Aging and also working with the Veterans Department. Uh, we've done it in years past. It's been very successful and I was hoping that, um, you guys reviewed the application and then we could go forward with the project, uh, starting in 2022.
Any questions for Jim? Uh, go ahead, Tom. Go ahead, Tom.
Just, Jim, how was this handled, uh, you know, during COVID? And would that, you know, in the future, if we had another return of some sort of pandemic, um, you know, does that create a lot of problems for you guys?
Uh, you know, it definitely puts, um, put it on hiatus for last year. Uh, you know, we, hopefully we don't run into that issue again in 2022. If we did, we'd have to kind of readjust and see, you know, where people were going to be placed. Uh, the certain tasks that they would be doing. We would try to, you know, make adjustments if that came around again, but, uh, for right now, we're planning to go forward with it like we've done in the years past. And hopefully, um, you know, we get a good amount of applicants and everybody gets placed in various town departments and then they're able to, um, you know, utilize their volunteer. um, you know, utilize their volunteer hours to support the other town departments.
Okay, now, a lot of people have been surprised that they could work from home, you know, via Zoom and different things. And have you guys come up with some home activities for folks who needed to put hours in?
Um, I haven't done that in the past, because that's definitely a discussion that we can have. I have a number of opportunities potentially at the new adult center, and then other town departments have taken on a lot of tasks from um various positions that they've offered before. Uh, we haven't really talked about any um remote ones at this point, but um I I think that I could have those discussions with some of the department heads that participate.
Yeah, I appreciate that, just because I know even myself, I was very resistant to doing uh any remote work online, and and now I've really found it's really helpful and enjoyable and um you know, and I would be nice if you guys could open that door, because there might be some folks who really could be productive, uh, who wouldn't need to be at an exact location, so I'm glad you look into that. Thank you.
Yes, well done. Thank you. Any other questions for Jim? You're looking for a motion to accept the senior tax abatement program?
Um, I made the motion and and Tom seconded it over.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, Steve Moran.
Yes.
Josh Levine.
Yes.
Tom Akusa.
Yes.
Mark Gold.
Yes.
Mark Strange is a yes. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
On to the special fall town meeting draft warrant. So how do you want to handle this plan?
I think we should just go through each one, I guess, or start there. Um, I do have the finance director available. I'm gonna move her in right now. So the first uh part is the standard part that we always include. The date is uh to be determined. And I can give you a pre- a brief explanation as to why. We do have the high school gymnasium reserved uh at the moment. Um, we are waiting to see what COVID cases look like, how the warrant uh came together. Uh, there seems to be a general consensus that the DPW garage is the preferred location because of the space and the ability to open the garage doors and create better airflow. However, um mid to late October can be somewhat unpredictable with weather, and if we set the location right now, I could almost guarantee we will have some weather events that will require DPW to mobilize. So um I'm asking that we wait until October eighteenth. I think knowing what the weather might be in two weeks is a lot easier to predict than what it is a month out. And otherwise, we could use the high school if if we need to. Um, so Article One, uh, this is the transfer of a hundred thousand for the uh Long Meadow Street Transportation Improvement Project. This was one that came up at the last um annual town meeting. Um, so we were looking to get this third installment of money to keep the engineering work going. It's picked up pace because um some of the COVID restrictions have lifted and the engineering firms are back moving ahead. Um, and Jennifer, if I um miss something or you want to jump in, feel free.
Well, I question Lynn. Now, this was approved, this funding was approved before, right?
Yes, it was, when it was um first announced in twenty nineteen, it was for um installments. It was about four hundred thousand dollars of engineering work that we were breaking out over four uh years. So that we weren't asking for four hundred thousand all at once. So this would be the third a hundred thousand dollar installment.
Okay, all right, so this um, all right, good, so this hasn't really been approved. Each time we have to, we have to go through this for each hundred thousand.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Hopefully we'll get it.
Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay, Article Three, um, this is the water retained earnings. This is the uh increase uh based on high usage and its budgeted cost being.
Can you adapt it to?
Oh, sorry, I skipped that completely. My bad. Um, yeah, the daycare salary. So this one, uh, we had only funded half a year because we weren't sure what the situation was going to be for daycare getting up and running again. Um, and so this is to supplement um the daycare operating uh budget while it gets back up on its feet. Um, and it will be reimbursed to the general fund through daycare fees once they get going. They're projected to open in early October.
Any questions, Lynn, on that? No.
Okay, um, Article Three is the water retained earnings. This is to shore up the account. Uh, the budgeted costs were uh lower than what actual cost came in at. Um, and um we need three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to to shore that account up. Um, Jennifer may have more info on this one because I know she was the one directly dealing with this.
Um, so Steve, just to to clarify um the information. They um we budgeted for about, we're told to budget for about a million dollars, and then the actual cost came in at one point, three million. Um, the majority of the cost increase is due to capital outlay. The Water and Sewer Commission budgeted about four million dollars in capital cost for FY twenty one. They actually had seven million dollars in actual costs. So when they distributed that three million dollars across all the partner towns that utilized the commission, our portion was that three hundred thousand dollars. Our usage was up, so we had a higher portion. If our usage was down, we would have a lower portion. If our usage was about the same as it was in nineteen and twenty, our costs would have been south of two hundred thousand dollars. Because our usage is up so much in FY twenty one, it was north of three hundred thousand.
And our revenue is up a lot because our usage is up.
Correct. Our revenue is up about eight hundred thousand. I ha- I think I have six hundred thousand in the notes here, but the revenue is up eight hundred thousand. And we're looking to close retained earnings. Um, they were submitted to DOR today. Um, hopefully, they'll be finalized and approved in a week or two um at about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in retained earnings. So we'll have nine hundred and fifty. We're asking to take three hundred out of that and pay this FY twenty one bill.
That that leaves us still above our target of five hundred thousand retained earnings.
Exactly, yep. Not for a good reason, but still looks good.
Thank you.
Okay, well, good to move on.
Yep.
Um, Jennifer, I'll have you take Article Four, too, because this is uh one you were working on.
Sure, Article Four is just a bill of prior year. Um, they had a leak at the high school about um June sixteenth, and they located it in a built-in gutter. Um, they had a large crack in it, so um they called an emergency um vendor out, J D Rivet. Uh, he came out, sealed the crack, and we received the invoice after the um books had closed.
Jennifer, just a comment usually in the explanation, because it'll save us getting asked that on the meeting, town meeting floor. It should say it was for a high school repair of a gutter or something. You know, we don't have to tell, say the vendor, but if you say what it was for, it just, you know, preempts the question you're gonna get.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Article Five. Uh, so this one is um similar to the charter conversation that you were having. Um, in the FY twenty one budget, I might be getting my years off, um, twenty twenty budget, FY twenty budget, there was an additional increase of two firefighters to help uh with the increasing call volume that the fire department was experiencing. Then we got hit with the pandemic, and we took a very conservative budget approach, and the select board voted on an amended budget before it went to the annual town meeting, and it removed those two firefighters. We've been monitoring the EMS receipts over the course of the pandemic and certainly now in in this new normal phase that we're in, and we're seeing those numbers rebound to what they were pre-pandemic, and our staffing um is it, we need to respond with additional um staffing, staffed positions. Uh, it will help be able to run those two ambulances. Right now, we're running one most of the, all the time, um, but the second one is uh sporadic, depending on the number of people we have on shift. I do have Chief Dearborn still here in the meeting if you had specific questions related to this. Um, but this would fund the two positions from January first through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, can I ask that, I I think I was part of the budget that voted, the group that voted for the budget, but I think we it would be meaningful to add in the explanation that this will result in a, in a permanent increase or a you know, uh, um, an increase in the the annual budget in future years. This isn't the a one-time transfer. This is a transfer to boost the budget that will now increase future years because we're adding permanent staff to it, and I think it's worth putting that in.
Sure, we can add that.
Noted. I just want to make note that um we're looking at projected Emulands revenues to offset these two um positions. So because of um calls that are, you you know, we're not able to take, we'll be able to take take them, charge for them, as well as um do mu- uh do mutual aid, bill for mutual aid as well.
And it might be worth stating that as well, that the this will be reimbursed from the increased call volumes.
Anything else on that one? Okay, uh, Article Six, I'll kick to you, Jennifer, for OPEB.
Um, oh, my favorite subject. Um, so we are looking to fund an additional five hundred thousand into the trust fund. Uh, there is about four point five million in there now. It's pretty, it looks pretty good. Um, altogether, our net position of unfunded liability is about twenty five million nine hundred thousand. That's down from twenty nine million eight hundred thousand. So that's great news for the town. Um, we, the reason for that is our rate of return from this past year, and the stock market has gone up from uh projected five and a half percent. We actually had an actual return of six and a half percent. As well as um a decrease in healthcare costs over what was projected. So we projected higher healthcare costs than actually came in. So um again, the unfunded liability is at twenty five point nine million. We have four and a half in the trust fund, and we're looking to add another five hundred thousand in there.
Any questions for Jennifer?
This is part of our policy to add money when we have have the opportunity, so we should do it.
Right, right. Moving right along.
All right, Article Seven is the standard CPA one. I can go through it if you'd like. It's pretty routine at this point.
That's just, we got the allocation of these, these amounts are going into the three funds and then the undesigned, right?
Yes.
Any questions? I think we're good.
Article Eight, um, that is the uh uh operating stabilization fund. Um, I think we're waiting to get that number, and once we do, we'll plug it in. Uh, but again, it's similar to OPEB where it follows the town policy.
Any questions for Lynn?
Okay, Article Nine, um, this yield notice is highlighted in here. It um uh, this was called out because at your June twenty first, twenty twenty one, select board meeting, when you wa- set the water sewer rates, you voted to uh remove, or I'm sorry, you talked about voting, but we don't actually have a record of a vote of um you transferring eighty thousand dollars from the sewer enterprise to um, or sewer retained earnings, I'm sorry, to cover the um the sewer rate. Um, and so i- if you would like to do that, we would need a formal motion, and I believe then it becomes a warrant article, although that process is still a little unknown to me. So maybe one of you has some memory on that.
Yeah, I I I didn't believe that it needed to be because it's an enterprise fund. Does the town need to transfer money, vote to transfer money out of the sewer enter sewer retained earnings? If we do, then we ought to, I can't imagine people are gonna not vote to to lower their sewer rates. So do we need, if we need a motion here, I I'll make, I'll make the motion that we I I don't know if we need to do this. I think we'll do it. I I just do it as part of the motion to accept the articles on the on the warrant. That part of the, one of the motions will be to to recommend Article Nine to transfer eight eighty thousand dollars from sewer retained earnings to into the sewer operating fund, which is what the, what we're gonna be doing, right? Isn't that the request? To transfer eighty thousand dollars from sewer retained earnings to the sewer operating fund, thereby allowing for a reduction of sewer rates?
Um, I don't want to put a monkey wrench into this, but we might not need the eighty thousand with the quarterly billings. Um, the revenue that's coming in um is, will have two extra months this year than we would um other years hitting this fiscal year, as well as our sewer, um, we actually received a credit on our sewer bill in the amount of forty seven thousand dollars because we used less sewer than what was anticipated. So with the additional um revenue being received this fiscal year, along with a credit on our sewer bill, um, I don't believe we'll need the eighty thousand dollars at all.
Jennifer, not to be a smart guy, but how sure are you? Because if we run out of money, we only have one shot to put more money in, whereas if we put money in and we have too much, we'll just take it out at the end of the year, right?
Um, I can come back, I'll be coming back to you next.
But you, we don't want to be caught short in these enterprise funds because there's literally no other source of revenue.
Before I set next year's tax rate, I would have to come back to you and and um ask for additional money. But you can put it on now if in uh if we if it, if we have extra money, it just falls back into retained earnings at the end of the year. Um, but I just wanted to be clear that we do have a credit on our bill and will be receiving extra revenue. So you'll hear that throughout the year, and if you question why we even went through this process.
We're not going to retain earnings, Jennifer, because it's an enterprise fund. It'll go back into, it'll stay in sewer. It doesn't, it's not part of the general operating budget in my my understanding.
And it'll stay, stay in the re- sewer retained earnings.
Right, it'll stay in the retained earning, you know, we'd have to put in there, but not into, right. I'm fine, if you want, if you say we can delete it, we'll delete it.
I I have a question in terms of why this is not, since we're also the water commissioners, why is this not a select board vote as opposed to a town meeting vote? I mean, you know, don't we have control of both these enterprise funds, and can we, we can't move money around the way we want to?
No, we don't have control of the enterprise funds. Even when we set rates, we gotta get them approved to, you know, get get all the budget for the water and sewer departments approved. I mean, it's part of the budgeting process, Steve. We don't get to set the budgets. The town meeting does.
Okay, so what we could do is leave it on here for until the next meeting, and if we we have an update, we'll provide it. Um, Article Ten, um, this fixes an error that was caught. Uh, um, this, the historic district commission um bylaw was updated at the annual town meeting, and now this will establish the um historical commission. Uh, in research we've done, it does not appear that we have ever done this. So we will, um, first, Article Ten is accepting Mass General law, uh, chapter forty, section eight D to create the historical commission. And then the bylaw that directly follows actually creates the bylaw and the language for the historical commission. These were um put forward by the historical commission, along with discussion with historic district commission and a ton of research by the town clerk. Article Twelve, I do not have any information on, um, from what was relayed to me, this was a conversation between a resident and the building inspector. Um, and this bylaw or this um uh warrant article came to be as a result of that. The building inspector was away for a week or so, and I was not able to discuss with him before I put this on the draft for you to look at. So I will be following up with him this week to find out what's behind this and where the actual definition came from, because I'd like to understand it better.
What's being added, the two italics? Just definition, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And so this came up at the last, at the Springtown meeting, the Meadowbrook Drive.
Yes, yep. So I think this is in response to that, but this has not been reviewed by town council yet. And I'm not sure where the definition of apartment came from. I would just like to learn a little more before we finalize the warrant. Okay, and then Article Thirteen, Steve, maybe you want to speak to this? It's from Energy Sustainability Committee.
All right, this article is pretty much forbidden from Lexington Town Meeting passed a while back. From my discussions with Lexington, Lexington people, they said this was the most impactful warrant article of helping them promote their environmentalism, which actually at this stage of the game has panels, I believe, on every one of their school buildings, the boot. I also think one of the most important things is the comprehensive climate, climate plan, which we really, you know, we, we keep, you know, open space plan needs to be coordinated. So I just think that this kind of, this putting it there, making this on the warrant, solidifies the position and what the town can take, and I also think it would probably not be the concept of having building two new buildings in twenty and twenty-one with absolutely no alternative energy parts of those projects. I don't think that will happen again, and I think that this, this warrant will make sure that will not happen again. And that's why the Sustainability Committee has put this one on.
Okay, ready to move on? Article Fourteen is your favorite one, the rezoning of the parcel on Williams Street. This one was discussed to be included at the annual town meeting and then was not put forward. So the property owner is back requesting that this come forward at the fall town meeting. And
Lynn, but fourteen, fourteen has, is not being submitted through petition or through anything else other than a request from a developer for us to rezone his property. Is that correct? It's not from the zoning board of appeals coming to us or anybody else. It's just a private individual asking the Select Board. May, may or may not be a town resident, asking the Select Board to act on their behalf.
Correct, yep. Same process that was followed for the annual town meeting. It hasn't changed. Okay, and Article Fifteen, I'm not sure, this is one that's still being developed, and it may not make it here at all. But just the background on it, the landscaping at the high school needs some attention, to put it mildly. Some trees have reached their end of life, which seems hard to imagine, but there were ten-year trees planted, and we are approaching year ten. And there's a lot of overgrown shrubs and plantings that need to be removed or relocated. And it is such a large campus, and the landscaping was so detailed that it really is something that needs a, a pri- a private landscaping firm to come in and tackle. It's more than D P W can take on unless we want to have fields and parks done by someone else temporarily. It's, it's just too much to handle. So there was an onsite meeting this summer between myself, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the school principal, and D P W, walking the grounds and determining what could be done to ease maintenance and make the grounds look better. And we're working to develop something. We thought we'd have something for fall town meeting, but it's possible that we won't. But that's the background on that.
And it would have a price tag, I assume, if it was ready for the town meeting?
Correct, yep. And then we will add the ten that were discussed tonight, and we'll have a cleaned-up draft back to you for October fourth.
And do you plan on us voting on, on the warrant at that point?
You, you could. I just don't think I would have you set the location, so I don't know if you can do that separately, if you can. Yeah.
Anything else on the, on the warrants, around the warrant? Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Jennifer. Last but not least, Cable Advisory Committee.
So attached to your, yeah, attached to your agenda is an email that I received from the former Cable Advisory Chair notifying the Select Board that they tried to reorganize, and no one wants chair or clerk positions. So I did run this by town council. We do have a bylaw that requires a, a vote to elect a chair. So it, to some point, is now, I guess, in your hands, because you can request that they go back and try again, or you could have a conversation about removal, I guess, or is anything of that nature.
All right, I'll, I'll thank you, Lynn, on this. So we, we talked about this during agenda review, and it occurred to me, and maybe to all of you. So the Cable Advisory Committee, you know, essentially has one function, that is to negotiate with Comcast every ten years. I don't know that they have any other ongoing responsibilities. I think Mike and Lynn kind of tried to do some research to see, you know, how this committee was formed and, and kind of get specifics on it, and they just couldn't find anything. Thought occurred to us that, you know, maybe it's time for, maybe the Cable Advisory Committee's useful life has, has come to an end. Nobody wants to be the chair, and we're very close to finishing up our negotiations for this, this contract. The next time will be, you know, eight, nine, ten years from now. Wondering if anybody had thoughts on that?
Well. Well, I had a question. I guess one thing would be to, to ask Attorney Epstein, who's our consultant on this. And did you hear anything from him, Lynn? Did you run this by him?
No, I ran it by town council.
Okay, because if we're thinking that we would make any big changes to the committee, he, he might be a good person to advise us. The other question is, Lynn, there's a, another committee that works parallel, or works with the Cable Committee, and, and they mostly are responsible for L C T V and the budget there, is that right?
So there, L C T V has a, an advisory committee. It's not a town committee. It's private.
Okay, all right. So there, you, you don't have to worry about them at all. Just, this is our, our only worry.
Correct, that, that they, the Select Board gives them the authority to act in your interest as the issuing authority, so they work and negotiate the cable license every ten years.
Yeah, so I guess I would say that we should probably talk to Attorney Epstein and let him, get his view on it. And that's pretty much it.
Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, the, the other thing the Cable Advisory Committee does is lines of communication open with Comcast, especially when there are, are service issues or other things. It's, you know, I get lots of people send me emails, and I just send them to Dr. Wolman, and he talked to the Comcast person, you know. It, it's not frequent, but it, it's useful, and I'm just wondering, Lynn, if we can't encourage somebody like our assistant town manager to take on that, that kind of interface role. It's kind of, or maybe even Chad, because it's a, it's really a purchasing kind of, you know, vendor interface thing. But I think we need to, we need to allow for something, or somebody, or some system to, to continue to interface with Comcast. I don't think we can say, we're wrapped up, see you in eight years, and we're not gonna talk to you between now and then.
Steve Morantz.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and it certainly could be, but I thought in all the interviews we had, you know, beginning in June, didn't we appoint two or three or four people to the Cable Advisory Committee? One, one people applying for that? When I had like new members on there, I almost feel like asking to go back and try again is not necessarily a bad idea, because I do, I think that having an interface is, is a, is a good idea, having this committee. And it's also conceivable, based on what we heard, it, it might not be a ten-year contract next time around. It might be shorter, we might want to have these folks around. But I, I, I thought that we, people were actually interested, I, I thought we had people interested in this committee. If that's the case, and we just appointed them, we might want them to reevaluate.
Uh, I'm with Steve. We just named somebody, I, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but we talked to him about the potential wireless system in town, and so there, I think there's still some thinking to do in that committee, so. Yeah, I think we kick it back and ask nicely to try again.
Good, I can take that approach, and I can report back and let you know. And in the meantime, I can inquire with Attorney Epstein to figure out what happens if we have no members step up.
Yeah, Lynn, because I remember Attorney Epstein made it clear that folks who are on the L T C, L C T V advisory board are not supposed to be on the Cable Advisory Board. So we should also get an idea about memberships, to make sure that there's no dual memberships, because that could be a conflict that's, you know, we want to avoid. So if you can check on that also.
Happy to.
Lynn, you're gonna go back to Dr. Wolman and, and the committee and see if they have, had any change of heart? And then we'll revisit this at the next meeting?
Yes.
Anything else in the way of the Cable Advisory Committee? Okay. Come to the end of our regular session agenda. Are we at the point in the evening where we go back into executive session?
Yeah, I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion that we adjourn the regular open meeting session and reconvene into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation, not to resume the open session.
We have a second. Second. Any discussion? Yes, Steve. You're muted.
Yes, in terms of, since my, my Select Board comment gave no response, I believe that if this is a moan again, fine. But I thought we, as a committee, asked Lynn to, I don't know if it was, if it was a vote, we asked Lynn to invite EverSource to our October fourth meeting, and she said they cannot come to one, they come to October eighteen. And we can just not, we can say nothing to them, and maybe they won't come. But the question is, do we want to say, let's wait and, and make it formal and have Lynn, I mean, they did say, this is what we want to do. If we need to take a vote, that's fine. If we just say, Lynn, go ahead and do this, but I think she needs to have the town, the town manager, since Lynn's had this communication with EverSource to say, at this stage of the game, we just as soon put this off and see how things develop, or works to that effect. And I, I don't think you need to vote for that, but I think that needs to be addressed, because the next thing is for, I mean, it's not, you know, we need to respond to what they said, I believe.
Well, I think we can talk about this during the executive session. We're still in regular session.
Well, we did discuss it in regular session. We, we said, we told them to come on the fourth in regular session. That was a regular session discussion.
But do you have any objections to us going into executive session?
No, I, no, I don't.
Steve, if you're looking for consensus, I'll support. We, we uninvite them for the fourth?
There you go. If it was consensus to invite them, let's have, I think we have a consensus to uninvite them. I think that's fine. That works for me.
Okay, now we're gonna have a vote to go into executive session. Steve Morantz.
Yes.
Josh Labee.
Yes.
Tom LaCusa.
Yes.
Mark Gold.
Yes.
Do we need to zip over to that other caller? Can we stay on this one?
We can stay on this one. We can have everyone leave. You might want to just close out and tell people that the public session's over.
Lynn, how are you, how are you gonna handle the recording so that we don't have the executive session part of the, can you stop the recording and then restart a new one?
The recording that I'm doing doesn't go anywhere. It stays on my computer. L C T V will eventually sign out of the meeting.
Okay, great.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's ten oh six P M. We are ending our regular session. We'll see you back in two weeks for October, October fourth. Have a great, a great week, a great weekend.